Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 15th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the X house of the building which are now located there and there, not this way. And on 20 we salute the American flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for a second dwelling unit or a second home. This with the Ackerman family located at 112 South Cross Road in Stasburg. Make it a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
He nays your extensions. Motion carries. Let's see, there you are. Nadine, you want to come on up?
Sure. Yeah, I wasn't sure if you had the public come up first.
No, we'll wait for that. Do you want to just do a quick, rough presentation? We've already seen it and know everything, but as to the audience, won't.
Right, so just a general recap. This property is, I'm not really ready for that.
Can you move the microphone?
Okay. So this property is 34 acres in size. It currently has one existing single-family home on it and a foundation that was always intended for a second home. So this application is to get permission to build the second home on that foundation, which is pretty much right behind the existing home. They will share the existing well and sanitary facilities. The existing driveway in Kirkcott off of South Cross is existing, so pretty much everything's existing on the site.
And I'll point out here for the audience that we have a letter from the Department of Health noting that you still have approval for the set system for the foundation.
Correct.
For the house wasn't built. And we had comments, we received comments from the fire department, one of which was that they wanted a portion of a driveway that's nearest the main existing house to be a little bit wider, but then we looked at it on GIS and showed Chief Strutz what it really looks like in actuality, and so that's a condition to consider tonight for approval to make sure that we have that somehow documented because the survey you used, I think, is from 2008.
Yes. So just to clarify, and I'm just going to kind of point on this, we're looking at like the access and then this area coming in?
No.
No, see, I think that's, we're kind of confused.
Want to go show them?
I'll show.
Okay.
We went to the site last week, Tad and I, and this isn't, this isn't right. It's pretty much, it's pretty much like that.
Yeah, this is, this is like 18 feet here and it is, it is wider, right.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know that the fire department would have a concern if it was shown right now. Whether you could just do it yourselves without having Marie come back out, that's up to you guys.
I suggest that you talk, speak with Tad because at times we've had overlays, paper.
So that's not what the fire department's concerned was exiting the south end of the loop. So where that meets to come back out, South Cross, on GIS we see that it's much wider.
Yes.
They're just looking for that to match.
Right, so this is where the confusion. So we can definitely take some field measurements to update this area and note that, what that is, you know, as you come into the house and around the house and as it extends. We are showing the proposed turnaround at the north end of the loop because as we discussed, we're not encouraging the fire department to actually use the loop. So making improvements at the south end of the loop, we're not, again, interested in doing. We can also confirm the dimensions at that end and update that as well, but...
That seems to what they're looking for, really is just an acknowledgement of what's there right now.
Sure, sure. So if it, you know, if it's acceptable to the board...
And we'll hope they never have to use the loop at all, that they never even go to the place.
Right, right. We will definitely confirm some field measurements and take some ties and update that, you know, for, for the final approval.
And if you want to speak to Ms. Moss, like I said, about how to document this or record it or memorialize it, we'll figure something out. Thank you, Tad. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Any comments from the consultants?
My only recollection when we were talking about it at the workshop meeting was that the survey date may have been older and that's why some of the improvements are not showing up.
2008 was the survey.
Right, so just wanted to update it so that it reflected more current conditions was the discussion.
Correct. Thank you. Mr. Zataro, any comments?
No.
Ms. Paldaro?
No.
Any comments from the board?
No.
No.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being, I'm going to get a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Gersky, I believe this resolution is yours?
Okay, resolution to grant conditional site plan approval, Ackerman, whereas, actually, resolution 2024-11, whereas the applicant, Kenneth Ackerman, has submitted an application for site plan approval to construct the second single-family dwelling on 34-acre lot in 112 South Cross Roads, Stasburg, New York, in Greenbelt zoning district. Whereas, 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 whereas be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan set and authorizes the chair or is authorized as a he to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. Payment of all fees in escrow. Revision of site plan set to detail current and the proposed improvements to the width of the driveway intersection to the proposed dwelling unit and southern loop. Number three, revision of site plan set to include a note indicating no work will be done in the wetland or its adjacent area without DEC approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays your extensions?
No.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Pleasure working with you.
Thank you. You too. Thanks for the quick turnaround. We appreciate it.
Good luck as well. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Crofton Mews. This is a long gestating subdivision, excuse me, site plan. This is the area that if you're on 9G heading north, you can actually see kind of behind the old Mews Lodge over on your left or the west side of 9G. Mr. Kaufman, welcome back.
Hi.
So let me just first throw it out, I know you're anxious to get moved forward, so Ms. Fransom completed a very detailed comparison today. You saw it, so there's some cleanup. It's most, it's four pages, but it's mostly small stuff. Things that didn't get carried over that need to, things that need to be corrected. Bonnie, do you want to highlight any of that memo for us, the high points?
I think a lot of it was deferred to Pete for the engineering aspects of it. I think the one item I would like to highlight, which is a question really for the planning board attorney, is that the old plan had the old zoning designations and bulk requirements, et cetera, and we're treating this as a mitigation plan so that we can rely on the old plan, not to get us in to some situation with grandfathering. I don't know how that should be reflected, or if there's some special note that should be added, and it's something for, obviously, for Victoria not to address tonight, but something that needs to be added that highlights we're aware of it in some way.
Right. I think previously we were hoping the sheets would match one to one, but of course they don't. So we definitely need to add a list of all the prior drawings with the date they were approved on the title sheet, you know, original approved plan.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
So we can match them up. I got it.
I mean, you don't need to change your current numbering at this point, but we want to make sure that it follows through, that we know what the underlying approved plan is, and then that this is the mitigation for that plan.
Okay.
We can talk.
I think Bonnie also was addressing how we were going to handle the bulk requirements that...
Well, we're not, we're leaving the old bulk regs.
Yes.
Because we're not...
Using the new code.
Using the new code.
So should, should I just eliminate any of that from the title?
Well, I'll talk to Victoria and then we'll get you what to show.
Whatever, whatever the board is going to...
Because I think the new plan, I'm not sure it even had the new zoning district noted, probably to avoid the situation, but again, that's why I want to talk to Victoria about it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll go through your comments.
So I will take Bonnie's comments and I'll work with my engineer and we'll try and clear up her, you know, any of the confusion and somehow tie it in so it's, you know, we can match old with new.
Yeah, I would say another item, and again, it's just because of the fact we're dealing with approved plans, is the site plan had the subdivision map as part of a sheet, and so that subdivision map is filed and it has an easement for pedestrian access along the northerly property line going from 9G toward the emergency access road. That's all the, that's over, first of all, it's over the stream, I believe, and it's also in an area which is a protected area. So on the one hand, it's not shown on the site plan, on the other hand, it is a filed map. So I don't know whether it should, shouldn't be, if something has to be amended there, but again, it's just these...
Legal question as well.
Yeah, yep.
And I think that you said that there was a difference, a slight discrepancy in the way that the emergency access easement is shown?
Yes.
And the original goes to the property line here, it stops before that, so that would need to be clarified as well.
Right. Construction phasing just before with the SWIP, it was relying on the less than five acres. Disturbance here, we're seeing a SWIP that has more than five acres and fewer phases. So that's really, that's a Pete and Tad thing. Question landscaping, again, just some cleanups. Trying to think of the highlights here. I think there was an open grate shown for one of the bridges.
There is.
And I didn't know if that was still being required or not, and it was unclear to me because actually your bridge plans did match what was on the old plan, but those were unclear whether there was an open grate, but there was one sheet that showed an open grate bridge. We need some cleanup on the lighting to make sure all the lighting's shown, and this is one of those areas because again, this is the old plan, but we're trying to keep them true to, you know, compliance with zoning, dark sky compliance, LEDs, low values, if we can add that in. So you have my comments and, you know, we're happy to work with you on getting it right now.
I think the comment about lighting is, we actually said that the poles that were, or the lighting fixtures that were approved way back when may not even be available anymore.
Right, so that was, I don't know if it was just a carryover.
We hadn't talked about it very well, but you need to pick out probably some new ones because...
Yeah, we, they're about as, the lighting fixtures, shockingly enough, are about, they run as well as some of the new phones. They've become obsolete just as they're introduced to the public. So we're going to have to, I'll have to look through that.
And then...
Bonnie's comments are detailed though on that.
Yeah, and then the only other was, I think there's some references still to HOAs, which will be removed because this is a rental property, so...
We know HOI on this, right?
No.
That's what I thought, so we need to make sure that all references to that are deleted because it talks about the HOA doing some maintaining of some of the site and it would be the owner instead.
Yes, right.
Yeah, it's just going to operate like a, you know, a multi...
I don't know, it's, we understand, it's just, that's why I had Bonnie go through because I want to make sure we could clear. What I'm hoping happens, Lou, is that when this is signed, the new mitigation plan, that you don't have to come back here for a long time. Wouldn't that be nice?
Aren't you going to miss me?
Yes, we will.
You'll have to buy a new car.
Don't worry, I'll find things to come.
I was just going to say...
Mr. Zataro, comments?
I don't think that's really trouble.
No comments other than I haven't had a chance yet to, to look at the plans. I had given them to our structural engineer to just look at the last CPL letter. On the bridge plans, I thought I would have some comments this week from him, but I don't. So I think early next week I should be able to get to them, and I'm primarily just going to look at grading and drainage, see how it compares with the old plan. I assume it's generally the same. Tad and I have to look at, you know, the SWIP. They already have an NOI that's, you know, been active for years and years and years. And I wanted to just look at the road plans just to make sure that there's no updating for any new specifications because again, this was approved, I don't know, 2007, 2008. But I have a question and I think I ask this almost, almost every time, you know, the loose here, so you would think, you would think I would know it by now, but so we're, at some, so we're going to, at some point we're going to issue special use permit approval and extension of site plan deadlines. So the reviews that Bonnie and I are doing now, you know, there's going to be, there will be some plan-like updating, but the special use permit, is that going to have conditions in terms of site plan comments?
The special use permit portion of this would be addressed in the resolution, meaning the specific criteria for a, for a special use permit.
Okay, so the reviews that we're doing now...
Oh, should be for those criteria for SUP, yes, as well. And the special use permit, the criteria just narrow, they're like secret, but they narrowed down into the impacts on the area, the neighborhood around it.
Okay.
As opposed to community-wide impacts.
Okay, so my lack of, my lack of getting, getting to this is because there's been a lot of, you know, like other things. I mean, I'm going to get to it, and I know I've been telling you that, but it's not holding, holding anything up because you're proceeding with health department, DEC, DOT, right?
Well, DOT have meetings next week. I mean, they, that's a critical meeting that could, you know, create a real problem or end all problems with DEC. So, but I'm going to try and be optimistic about that.
All right. I don't expect much on my end, but I mean, I just, so I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm not holding anything up, I mean, because you're not ready to go out tomorrow and start.
Okay.
But I promise you, I will get to it.
Okay.
I know I've been saying that, but I will. Just remind me.
You and I had conversed in terms of, you know, and I appreciate Bonnie getting out that thing, I think she did it in about 15 minutes after we clarified what the, what plans she was looking at, which is amazing to me. And you, and I was hoping to have you report to the board that more or less the engineering is, you know, not significantly changed and you would find it acceptable, but I'll have to wait for another meeting on that, I guess.
Or a memo. And you've reminded me that I need to ask for a motion to reopen the public hearing on the special use permit and site plan?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're official.
What did I just, sorry, he was still talking.
I forgot to reopen the public hearing. I asked for a motion to...
Was that Hannah and Chris then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Our dynamic duo.
Right. I had submitted a special use permit application.
No, it's, it's part of it.
And I don't know how that works. Is that deemed complete and waiting? I have no idea how that works.
We already opened the public hearing on both.
Okay.
So, Tad, is there any, are there any comments you want to make?
No.
Ms. Paldaro, any comments?
No.
All that whispering, we don't get to hear any of it?
I have to review the legal issues that were raised in the memo.
Thank you. Comments from the board or questions?
No, just one we're adjourned into.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Mr. Burt, I thought you were going to speak there for a moment. I had a thrilling, I had a thrilling moment there for a second. Sorry. When do, when should we adjourn this to?
There's two very different dates here.
Well, because we only have, so we have one meeting in June and one meeting in July. The reason why we have one meeting in June is the second meeting date would be Juneteenth and town hall's closed, it's a national holiday now, and our first meeting in July would have been July 3rd, and there were too many people who thought they might be leaving. So...
And everybody doesn't want to be here on July 3rd? I'm surprised.
There are those who would be here, don't worry.
You know, if you want to be here, I'll be here.
I feel like I will be here anyways.
So I'm guessing that we should push this out. We have an extra week because of the way the, this is, was an early, May 1st and 15th, so we have an extra week. Is that enough time for you to get through everything and...
I'm going to do it next, early next week. I have to, I mean, I've been promising Lou for months I was going to get to it, it's just, there's just been a lot of other things.
So do you guys think that June 5th is adequate time?
I'm sorry, June...
5th?
5th. Three weeks.
But I mean, is he, so the comments that Bonnie's generating, the comments I'm going to generate early next week, Lou has to respond to them, make changes, so I think...
July?
Continue the hearing to drive?
Personally, it'd be the second, I mean, if we're not...
But we could also, if he wants to come in the interim to discuss, we can, we can put that as a workshop item instead of a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, so I think it should go to the second meeting in July and then we can correspond with Lou in between.
In other words, we may have you here for workshop, we're just not the...
Or we may be able to handle it, and I mean, if there's no, if there's no direct questions that involve input from all, you know, the planning board perhaps, it can just be like a consultant's type of meeting.
Yes, yes.
Here, okay.
Okay, make it a motion to adjourn this to July 17th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion, oh, any nays your extensions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you.
We'll be back in touch. This is, this is the big first step not to bury it, I promise. Because that's, that was detailed, that's why I was asking for it.
No, I...
And we should have, as part of the plans that we should have the road improvements on 9G, but we don't know what those are yet.
Right, no, that's true.
I posed the question, could we pre-approve all three versions and then...
Yeah, I anticipate Bonnie's comments will clarify a few things about the plans which may, will satisfy the board and then maybe will help Victoria, you know, key on some of her concerns.
With the legal questions as well.
So you have a good holiday coming up and I'll see you again.
Thank you, you as well. Have a good morning.
Hi, Lou.
Right, that's what I thought. I want to... The next item on the agenda is another continued public hearing for CIA Hotel and Villas. This is for those in the audience where you see the St. Andrews extension with some wood down, that's the proposed entrance for a new hotel and rentable villas as well. Welcome back team. Make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
He nays your extensions. Motion carries unanimously.
Let me turn it over to you.
We are well.
Got the whole gang.
I would think you'd be getting tired of us by now.
Never.
No? No, I don't like that, never. Well, yes, we brought the team, the whole gang to address what I think are three issues that seem to require some clarification that have emerged during our conversations over the last two weeks and in our cover letter. You know, respectfully, I mean, we're a little disappointed, we thought we were going to have a resolution for tonight based on where we left it last week, but I hope that we can clarify these issues. We, we've all, staff and alike, and have been working together and we appreciate, appreciate the time spent to clarify and come up with a resolution on these. So the first one is going to be the lighting. We have both Michael Costelli, Michael, and well as Michael Gotti, who will address that, and believe me, we're somewhat as frustrated as you may be. I think we're dealing more with computer error than we are the substance, but I'll let, I'll let Michael and Michael take it and hopefully we can clarify anything and make a motion to dismiss it.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Good to see you guys again. I'm going to start by apologizing. I think the, you know, I misunderstood some of the direction throughout this, but I appreciate the comments we got this week, and I think it's actually going to result in a better, in a better solution here. One thing I'll show you, we updated some drawings since our conversation Monday, and yesterday we did, went back and forth on the design, and we've updated the drawings. We haven't had a chance to submit these, but I want to show you these tonight so you kind of see them, so you get a sense of what, what you can focus on when you're reviewing these. I think you're going to be happy with, with the things we ended up doing here. So first, I want to just kind of show, you can see it on this, this is the main, this is the overall, and then we've compartmentalized as you guys requested in the others, so it's a little easier to see on the printed plan. But what you're going to notice here right off the bat is we've delineated the buildable area of the site and only did the photometrics in there. I had misunderstood, when we, when we were studying the wet areas and we had some concerns about the aquatic life in there, I had misinterpreted that you guys wanted to see the photometrics through the whole site, and that's what we had done before, which brings the numbers way down. You guys made a very good point in, in doing that, but I think you're going to be happy that overall, when we just show the buildable area here, so again, when you zoom in, only the numbers are taken within that buildable site, site area. So that's the, that's the start of the conversation, and I'll go kind of high level. Over here, we've updated this, this chart, so you guys are going to want to see this when you're, when you're studying these drawings a little bit. You may notice that the average horizontal foot candle across the entire site went from about .1 to about .42. So still a very low number for an overall, but this is now indicative of what's, what's there on the site, and you guys can kind of take a look at that. Our maximum foot candle level is below 10, but those are going to be in really specific areas, and I'll kind of show you those right now, I can kind of go around the site and show you those. We've also isolated that, a few of the areas that you guys pointed out specifically, and we've done some averages and some, and some highs and lows at your request. So you can kind of see here the hearth canopy in the main building area and our drop-off, obviously, that canopy kind of acts as an indoor/outdoor space, as you can imagine where we're dropping people off. But when you take the entire canopy, you'll see that we're still under 2 on average below that canopy. In the barn, where we're going to have the event space and more gathering, it's a little higher, 3.5, but again, you guys will be able to kind of see that when you zoom in on those specific areas. Our minimum is obviously zero because it is an expansive site, and there's areas that we could build in, but we ended up not because we didn't need to. And then the service building was another concern that you guys had, again, for good reason. You also pointed out some areas where we had no lighting, so shame on us, we missed a couple of things and we've added those.
Stock parking.
Yes, yes.
Temporary, we've come, permanent parking.
Yes, exactly, so...
Oh, and the sidewalks too, they had no lighting, which...
Yeah, actually, we've added, we've added some light there too as well.
The bollards were shown, the little teeny bollards were shown, but zero foot candles I went over again.
And when I need your help, Michael, you can come to my office and help me design these things.
Actually...
It's a big site.
I had a magnifying glass plus the lights because to try to circle and show, that's why I showed Chris.
Understood, understood. So just a couple of specific points. You guys pointed out here, this is facing nine. The concern, or the challenge we have right here with these exterior lights is that this is a means of egress for the building, and you need by code five foot candle minimum, so it's not a max over there, it's a, it's a minimum five foot candles to get people out of the building and safely away from the building.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, what code are you referring to? It's minimum five foot candles for egress?
ATM.
ATM. Thanks a lot. You said ATM, this is not a bank. What are you referring to?
Well, ATM, five, it's a means of egress to get you, get customers away from the building in a fire at night, and it's just here...
One more time, just tell me where this is coming from. It's the fire code of the state or what?
No, it's at the point of, at the point of egress.
You need the microphone.
At the point of egress five.
I've heard the, I've heard the number.
And then one...
I got, I got, where's it from? Where's it coming from?
Which code?
Is this the International Illuminating Society as usual, or is this an actual code? Is this the International Illuminating Society as usual or is this an actual code?
Yeah, it's a general code we've been following. I'm not sure, across many jurisdictions. I don't have the excerpt of the code, the New York code, but it's a life safety code for a commercial building.
Can you provide us with a copy of that authority or line?
Yeah, we can do that, for sure, for sure. Happy if it's not there, take it out. But, you know, it's not it's not a tremendous amount of light, five foot candles, but we've reduced it. You may remember that those those hotspots before, we lowered the wattage of the fixtures against the building over there. And there are also shielded light fixtures and cutoff light fixtures. So, we get a very low bug rating, BUG rating, which means the glare is zero, in fact. Yeah, it's a zero glare.
We know the ideal bug rating is zero, zero, zero.
Zero, 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 yeah, yeah.
So, where is the actual door? This is.
The door is in this is in this corner here.
And you just walk out and run into the glass?
Yeah, you walk out across here, yeah. This will be a an area where you can you can walk.
And this is on building three, I think?
Yes, X three.
Thank you.
Yep. And you'll notice over here, we added light fixtures in the stacker area. They're not the brightest lights, but they're enough certainly to accommodate what we need.
Wayfinder.
Yeah, 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 wayfinding lights. Over here, we've lowered the wattage of the fixtures against X two as well.
Chris, you have a very detailed memory. I went through that fast that stuff pretty quickly with you. Wow.
Yeah, yeah, oh, there's more. Hold on, we got a few more. So, we did we did notice over here, we had two poles on either side of this island. We added a pole in the center.
Wait, I want to picture Michael smiling.
Lighting, that's good, that's good.
I think this is important.
We did we did end up, you know, studying this a little bit as well, the the walkways. We're comfortable along this area. We have the pole lights along here, but we are going to get some lights built from the front of the villas over here. And as we work our way here, we did notice that there was an area that. Whoa, this one here? Well, no, it was, where was that?
It was on the other side of the crossway. It was right near.
Was it up here?
It was near a wetland boundary.
This one? Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, sure. We, that area is covered sufficiently. We were, you know, identified just a risk of having three poles within twenty foot triangle. So, we have that far pole. We opted to keep it there. We think you'll be able to navigate that walkway suitably at night, given the context.
It's the fact that it's located right near a wetland boundary that we were questioning, that couldn't be relocated elsewhere.
Oh, the wetland boundary?
This.
Yes, I know what your interest is, which is lighting, 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 but we have to balance lots of interests, including the validity and safety or the the health of the wetland itself as well.
Okay.
Trying to avoid having things go in and planted, et cetera, when it's that that near one.
Yeah, I guess we did subtract that number from this analysis, so I can't tell how much, looking at this plan, I can't tell how much.
We could go.
Again, it's the location being by the wetland.
Yeah, so I I think if we relocate it to the other side of the island, what Michael.
It's going to have to do.
Probably add a bollard in between the other two light poles along the sidewalk so that we don't have a zero zone there. And he was trying to avoid multiple light poles, but I think that's what we'll have to do in order to accompany that.
Adding a bollard is okay. We can do something better for the wetland, believe me. Thank you.
I don't know if there was anything, any, oh, yeah. I mean, the walkways, again, we would agree with you a hundred percent. We certainly want the sidewalks to be illuminated sufficiently along here. And the light poles will do that. We're feeling comfortable, we'll do that. We've added, we've added a series of rail lights and such along the perimeter, but these, I don't think any of this has changed. We did make sure that any anomalies that we discovered are now gone and we averaged.
If we're going to plans, I looked at it.
Yeah, okay.
They just, they had other anomalies, meaning zero everywhere.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Yeah, and I think, you know, going ahead and compartmentalizing the the buildable area as opposed to the entire site changed the numbers enough to see that it's still it's still a very reasonable low amount of light.
And I haven't seen these plans yet, obviously.
No.
But I noted that in general, the rear of the villas was more brightly lit than what the fronts were. That makes any sense?
Yeah, in some of those areas, there are terraces where people are gathering, where entering.
It made sense in other words.
It's just, yeah, orientation to the front door.
That's the idea. Yeah, the overall averages in that chart. So, again, we can we can resubmit these right after this evening and get them in your hands.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
The second issue I know that has arisen is there was a letter sent by the Roosevelt Fire District based upon another meeting that we held with them and additional analysis, auto turn lighting, auto turn analysis and distances to the trees and the canopies and alike. And I just, and then we responded to that. This this particular letter was after, just so, I won't go through the whole chronology, but we've had three meetings with the Roosevelt Fire District. We've provided them with a minimum, at least, I counted, five different substantive responses, new auto turn analysis, additional information that they've required. This letter, if you've all seen it, is very specific. They were questioning, for example, that there were trees in a circle in front of P eleven and P twelve. They identified two areas with respect to the auto turn analysis and they identified a number of very specific areas where they questioned whether we had sufficient distance between the trees and the curb and potential overhang. So, frankly, we were glad to get this, what we considered a final, very specific. They obviously went through the plans in detail, you know, the final plans. And as you see, we responded to it in our May tenth that we submitted to the board and to them by TARP Consulting, very specific responses. We we made a minimum of at least five feet for with trees that to take into effect the overhangs and the curves on the trees. We set canopies that we would preserve a thirteen foot by six inch canopy. We we got rid of the island, the particular island.
Well, the island's still there, I think. You just took the trees out. Which, by the way, no offense, but you have, you showed the the turning radius of the auto turn plan. You showed an actual fire truck going right over that and I was like, that's going to tear the trees down, a landscaping plan, so glad you got rid of that.
Yes, and then and then there's two auto turn we blew up. One, I'm going to let let Chris respond to and explain. The other one, I think, is pretty clear. The second one, it was a turns at the emergency where we were cutting off a little bit of the parking spaces and and another area, and we showed where we adjusted that so we avoid any any of those. We did commit to the access gates. We would, of course, have an automatic access gate and we will consult with them on on coming up with that. And on their request that the bridge be included for fire apparatus, we told the reasons we didn't think that was feasible.
We agree with you.
Okay. And on as far as the naming of streets and communication system to identify for any 911 or any calls to the fire, we will, of course, work with them closely in identifying the correct streets and have a communication system where people are not getting confused with the campus, the CIA campus and the resort north of the Marichika. I'll let Chris explain, if he would please, just the one auto turn area that they had raised around the hearth building and the greenhouse and the cul-de-sac. Chris, you want to just go through that quickly?
I can take your word. With regards to the hearth building and the event barn, there was a request to maintain a five foot clearance from an overhang to the greenhouse. It's, it would require relocation of the building, which was not viable. So, we looked at this also as there's an alternative means of of a fire truck movement in appendix D, which allows a fire truck to back in to an area. We've shown the fire truck both backing in adjacent to the hearth building and adjacent to the event barn. Neither one of them intrudes upon that five foot buffer from the overhang to the greenhouse. So, it is our opinion, we've met the intent of the code and we've addressed the comments of the fire department. With regards to the fire truck path that was near building X two, if you recall, by building X two, we have some parking spaces slightly to the west of it. We had a slight overhang going into the striping adjacent to the space, but not the actual space itself. We've shifted the parking spaces approximately three feet to the north, so there's no longer any conflict or perceived conflict between the overhang and the actual striping at that location.
So, respectfully, we we retain TARP Consulting a well-respected and in fact, an entity that the the Fire District was was familiar with. And I think we are certainly prepared and TARP Consulting is prepared to certify in whatever form you'd like that we are in full compliance with all the with all the regulations, fire access regulations, and have complied with all the action items and issues that have been raised. And TARP Consulting has been in one-to-one contact with the district throughout this this process. So, we would hope that we have fulfilled and satisfied what we we recognize, obviously, as a critical issue and to your comfort level. Certainly, this is important to us and we believe we've.
Just so you guys understand too, there was a little bit of a miscommunication. We were talking to one independent individuals with the fire department. We were hearing comments from somebody else, Chief Strutz. Raymond Strutz is the chief. You were getting comments from Dan Nichols, who usually provides the comments. And we were getting both. And Chief Strutz said, we don't have anything new. I don't have anything from him. So, there was apparently some issue with information not getting all the way around where it should have. That's been corrected now.
Great, thank you.
So, we're clear. Are you asking the board to accept the certification in lieu of meeting with the fire department again?
Yes.
That's what it sounded like.
Yes, yes, we are.
That's what they're asking of you tonight, is to accept.
I think we.
Well, I need to know this because I'm following up with the fire department to try to go and set up a meeting. So, if that's not going to be, if we're not going to do that, then I'm not going to pursue setting that up. I thought that that's what we were doing, but if we're not, I need to know. Because I had thought.
Why wouldn't you meet with them?
Well, because I had thought that the planning board wanted to at least get fire department concurrence on the maneuvering, that they were okay with the maneuvering through the site before you considered conditional final. Now, that's what I thought. Now, if that's not the case, okay, but if it is the case, then after we had our meeting with these folks on.
Monday.
Monday or during, you know, the meeting, I called Chief Strutz and, you know, I said, hey, we want to set up this meeting. He was going to talk to Dan Nichols that, you know, evening. I didn't hear anything yesterday. I sent an email today to both Ray and to Dan saying, hey, you know, we want to get this like resolved. When can we meet? We can meet anytime, any day. And I have yet, I have yet, you know, to hear back, so.
I think we should still try to pursue this so we can see what their what their comment, final comments are. But I believe also they may change because, again, there was a miscommunication. Not everybody was seeing the same information.
No, I did, I did, I did tell them today in my email that that the pedestrian bridge, as a heads up, was not going to be upgraded to fire apparatus status because there was no need because they, because there was already two access points. And the other purpose of meeting with them, twofold, was to also, based upon our discussion the other day about issuing issuance of building permits and COs, the bill inspector had brought up, you know, the question of there is, again, I don't know this, but that supposedly there's a section of the fire code that has to deal with or that deals with having a firefighting water supply at the site when they pull a building permit. And also, there was a question as to whether the emergency access road on the hill had to be in along with the main entrance off of the light before they pull a building permit. So, we wanted to try to clarify whether that secondary access had to be in along with the along with the water supply to fight a fire before a building permit would be issued, so.
So, so we did consult, and I apologize. Joe Plati, who you've met, could not make it tonight, but we did consult with them after we had that meeting on the what is called a chapter thirty-three, two forty-one fire and safety plan. That's the chapter and code of the fire code. And what that provides for is that when you have a, when you have a construction site, that you must have either a temporary or permanent access and water source for any buildings that might that might be impacted or have any fire safety during its construction. That is something that NRI has always done as a regular construction practice and, for example, all the insurance companies require that. It's typically a condition, it's usually found, at least in my experience, is a condition in the resolution of obtaining a building permit and it must obviously satisfy the the building inspector, the person issuing the building permit as well as the fire department. We will, of course, have access, sufficient access. The same roads that will be used for all our heavy construction equipment and the like will be the same roads that a truck would take to access. And we will, we will provide a two forty, what they call two forty-one fire and safety plan when we pull our our building permits.
That's correct.
That will also also have a water source, different types of water source. Like I said, some people use ponds as water sources, others have tanker trucks, others do piping, actual piping, you know, and and the like. So, you know, Consigli is obviously well aware of that and we will, we will be able to satisfy that. As far as an additional meeting with the fire, I'm sorry, with the Fire District, you know, the two auto turns that they identified, we've, we've, we've obviously addressed. We're not against meeting, you know, with anybody. We would just, we are concerned that this could potentially, another meeting is getting this meeting together and having it a week from today, for example, and then all of a sudden, June fifth is right around the corner and here we are again and we don't, that's our concern. So, I would only ask that if we do have another meeting, possibly if something comes out of that while there might be a discrete issue here or there, which hasn't been identified to date, like I said, that perhaps that could be at least accommodated in our conditional site plan approval and that doesn't delay it. So, we're not against having meetings, of course, and keeping this dialogue. They're an important partner in this project, but delaying our resolution approval, obviously, is.
I understand what you're saying. I think we all do up here, don't worry.
Okay, thank you.
Question about what you were going over earlier about removing the trees and some of those changes. Those are all on the current plan set that the board has?
Say that again, Victoria, I'm sorry.
There was a discussion about tree removal and relocating the parking spaces. Is that on the current plan set?
Oh, you mean that small moving, the tweaking?
Yeah.
It was in our, we provided a, we provided a diagram in in our response to you, but we purposely, in that May tenth submission, didn't want to start giving you new pages now and then because.
So, those would need to be, the plan set would need to be updated if the fire department accepts those?
Yes, well, whatever you ask, we will do it, of course, but we didn't want it, we didn't want to include, start throwing new pages at you now for this meeting. So, the last issue that has taken a good amount of time of staff and and our team and some of you has been trying to iron out this question of phasing versus built out and what's, what's, what's the disturbance phasing? What's the building sequence and what's the C of O? And that's been the conundrum. We have three different sort of silos and languages that we've been speaking. We had a very, very good meeting, I can't even remember, yesterday, day before, Monday, that that Pete helped put together and Ted and and Victoria was, I think that was our first meeting back from, and Michael was there back from Italy and Michael was there and and our team was here and we were in hybrid. So, I think we came up with a plan. So, I'm going to let Chris and Scott just sort of describe what we did. We have a, there you are. I'll let Chris, there's two sheets to this. I'm going to let Chris do the first sheet. And just so we break it up and we make this really interesting and exciting for you, Scott will do the second sheet.
I think it's only one sheet.
But but second sheet concept, go ahead.
Well, I mean, they kind of worked together.
Mic on.
Microphone.
Thank you for the meeting earlier this week. It was very helpful and it really made it easy for us to put this, put together this kind of understandable plan. So, I think what we suffered from before was the sequencing plan, which was our disturbance plan. And so, I think everyone.
Everyone was looking at that and thinking, okay, that's the way you're going to build out the project.
But. We were.
You're right. So, and this has been helpful for me too because now I have even a better understanding of how we're going to go about all of this. So, what we've done is we've broken the project down to, it does say sixteen on this plan, but it's actually fifteen distinct groups of buildings. And the the first group being the infrastructure and road. So, nothing happens unless all of that works complete. So, we can talk about treehouse cabins, we can talk about the the hearth or the event barn, but none of those would become open or, you know, we would apply for COs unless, of course, sequence one is complete, which is the roads, the infrastructure, the the support buildings, the stackers and all those things. So, all those things would be in place. And then we would work our way through the site and work on the individual groups. site and work on the individual groups of, of buildings. Now, mind you, you know, each of the groups, some of the, the projects, some of the buildings have different durations. And, you know, the, the hearth or the event barn or the spa, those could be 18 months long, where some of the cabins, you know, might be six months long. So, we're going to pick and choose based on those durations and having access to certain elements of the site of when we start to, start construction on those buildings. So, so Chad came up with, you know, Chad was very helpful in helping us understand and how we could go about doing, you know, pulling building permits and getting COs. So, you'll see that the groupings are mostly like buildings, and the way that we would go about it is that we would pull individual building permits, and then once a building was ready for a certificate of occupancy, we would apply for a certificate of occupancy. So, say, for instance, a group three had four buildings in it, is that we would get individual permits and individual COs, but when it came to the last building of the group, then we would do a site walk with Chad and just.
And make sure everything's.
And make sure everything that was a part of that group had been complete. So then, that would be the leverage that the town would hold in order to have complete, you know, see completeness of that.
And for colleagues, this is how we do it at River Ridge, where we're going in phases. It's a little easier to understand at River Ridge because they're just marching down the road as they go. This will be a little bit different in terms of how they pick and choose, but it's, it's similar. Chad explained this to me. You have a section, a grouping, as you called it, and then before the final CO is given, more or less, the whole site or that section all has to be done.
Right. Yeah, if we were missing a tree, but we got the CO for the first, you know, cabin or something.
That tree goes in.
Then we'd go, go back at the, for the last CO. Chad would say, where's your tree? I'd say, it's on its way, and then we'd wait, and then we'd install it. So it's a very simplified but understandable, you know, way about the site. You know, the one thing I would say is that there's never any intention of, you know, doing one and not doing the other. It's just a matter of really getting it all sequenced right so that, you know, we don't have a million things going on at one time, that we can complete some things, move on to the next, and there's kind of an understandable way that we're going to go about it.
As I said, once, in the meeting, once I realized that grading wasn't necessarily part of that phase.
Right.
The grading was going on at different times. That's why I understood where, why we were confused as well.
That's, that's, at, at the end of the day, all of the grading phasing is pretty much completed before you get to this, pulling any of the CFOs, because all the grading phases now needs to be done for group one, which is all the infrastructure, all the emergency road, utilities, roads, service building, that's all now one, and that requires the, almost the entire grading program.
I should add for the audience's benefit that this may seem obtrusive and strange that we're talking about COs this far out, but the truth of it is, is that we want to make sure that later on, when they've built stuff, that they can actually utilize it with a certificate of occupancy. And handling this stuff now makes it easier to back end, so.
And we want to express our real appreciation because we do recognize this was not clear, and it was a very collaborative effort to get to this. It's big, it's complicated, and I think we landed in a good place, so we really want to thank everybody.
Smile and take, accept the praise.
So, so with regards to the concept of Sheet Two, Sheet Two's going to be a narrative regarding prerequisites that are going to be required for that particular group or particular building within that group to get a CO. For example, the hearth building going online, it would involve having a certificate of authorization from the Department of Health to operate your water and sewer. You'd also have to outline how you're meeting all your parking requirements, what's been constructed, and how they meet. For example, the restaurant and the bar within a hearth building. And it could be a combination of, in that particular case, it could be one set of stackers that are up and operating the 15 car parking spaces on a northeast site and the parking beneath the hearth building. And as we go through that particular grouping, we then have to demonstrate how there's additional parking available on site for those particular uses. We'll also outline an overview of, for example, group one that Scott was referring to, although it doesn't consist of many buildings. We'll outline within, and we're playing around with just five to 10 feet of the curb line or the sidewalk, all landscaping and lighting would be, would be installed. So, we're going to get into that granular detail, so it'll assist Chad and, and Pete when they're doing their walkthroughs. And that's kind of the overview of what we're anticipating. We're not as concerned about the parking for the leasehold villas because they're going to be provided in front of the leasehold villas.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
It does. And we'll, we've done most of the work. As you can see, we'll try to get it to you in the next couple of days, so you have time to look at it, hopefully before the 7th, when hopefully we get.
And remember, we have an extra week. This is May 15th, so we still have three weeks before the next meeting.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get that, and hopefully, it's very important for us, if at all possible. I'm just stating, I've become a broken record, but I have to state it, that we get our resolution by then, the, the investors are looking, and it's very important for us to move that needle. So I, I feel obligated to say it. I know you know it, and you're aware of it, and I'm not going to jump off a ledge tonight. So, appreciate.
The ledges aren't that high here.
Jump, right.
Before I move on to consultants.
Do me a favor.
Before I move on to consultants, I want to know where your code comes from for the five-foot candles. Making sure that.
It's a point to be where it's not the.
Wherever it is. I want to make sure that I understand what it is and whether it's, we get things all the time from the International Eliminating Society, I believe, saying that they need 20-foot candles on something. Well, that may be their opinion, but that's not our code.
Yeah, it's a recommendation.
Eliminating Engineering Society.
Just to make sure we have the source of it. Thank you. Consultants, Ms., Ms. Franzen's exhausted. No.
No, nothing at this time. I know you're going to be, you know, submitting your revision, so we'll take a look at it as soon as we can.
I do have one question on the lighting plan, even though I haven't seen it yet. Is this specific to fixtures now, or is it still an average and not relating to, is this on a grid system that doesn't relate to specific structure, fixtures still? Yes?
No, it, it does relate to specific fixtures.
That's what I thought, because that's what it looked like, again, on the plans that I reviewed, but all those zeros, I would see little symbols, but there was no lighting there.
No, it relates to.
Thank you. Ms. Moss, any comments?
The only new thing that I saw on the lighting plan was that string of lights along something. There was a whole series of little rail lights. I don't know what the rail lights are.
Yeah, it's on, here, I'll try and call it. Yeah, it's a, it's on the, so you're, you're referring to these here?
Yes.
Yeah, what do they look like?
There's a railing system. I'll show you the fixture itself.
Where's the phone, please?
Oh, it's a railing system, and it's the vertical, it's on the vertical element of the railing system.
It's on the rail.
Yeah, so I'm going to, it's coming up.
It's on the rail.
Do you know the?
It's embedded in the rail shot.
Do you know what the number is, Michael? Off here. S.
Go down, yeah.
I gotta zoom in. Oh, it's on the other one.
SF rail.
So it's this one, yeah. On the vertical support, it's a very small downlight.
And they are on, they're on the building side of the post or on the river side of the?
On the building side.
Okay, and there's no Christmas tree lights, no exposed bulbs hanging?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Chad. Ms. Zataro?
No, we'll wait till we get the plan. How many, how many hard copies do we want of the plan? I know I want one. Chad, you want one?
Yes. Tell us one.
Well, we'll get back to you. No, we don't have to go over this tonight. Cynthia will get back to you.
Of the phasing plan we're talking about.
And the new lighting plan.
What are you talking about?
Well, this, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The, you know, the phasing plan that Scott was talking, whatever you're calling it.
Building plan.
It's called a build-out.
This one.
It's C 153, same plan page.
Okay. Grouping plan, I thought we, okay, got it. And then so, Chris, so does this, Sheet 153, does this change your phasing plans and limits of disturbance?
There'll be some modifications just for clarification purposes. I think we all agreed to eliminate from the phasing plan references to starting foundations, starting build-out of particular buildings. So, I've got to get rid of that level of detail on the sequencing. And I, based upon this plan, and I shared with you the other day on Monday, there were sections of the road, the loop road near the leasehold villas, that weren't necessarily to be installed in order to operate under, for the water and the sewer. But Lou had indicated during that meeting that he's going to construct all the infrastructure upfront, including the loop road, so I have to make those modifications on the plan.
So, why don't, why, once you go through, once you go through the phasing plan slash disturbance area plan, if there's just relatively minor changes, maybe you can just meet with Chad and I and maybe you don't have to revise the plans and submit them all over again. Maybe that can be a condition, maybe. I don't know.
Okay, that's fair.
Maybe.
Okay, well, maybe not a condition then. I don't know. We could just keep, we could just keep getting more plans and plans and plans and then.
I mean, we just, the other thing, we just revised some of the cuts and fills, and I don't know if that's.
All right, well.
It's, it's, I mean, I agree with your approach.
Go through it.
Yeah, so we don't have to.
If we're going to do a condition, everything needs to be laid out. It's going to take.
All right, well, why don't you go through it, and then we'll.
Okay.
Regroup. I'm done.
Is, is the emergency road, it's hard to read from all the way over here. The emergency access road is part of Phase One now?
Yes.
So that will be going. And then, have you given any thought, is there any limitation on the number of groupings you can have open at one time? Or?
Well, they can't go, they can't, they can't go over more than, more than 10 acres of disturbance.
But all the disturbance is done first time around. Yeah, but they have to go back in and. That's true.
Yeah, we'll grade them and install the infrastructure, stabilize them, and then move on.
Right, but, so it, it's not going to be possible for you to have each grouping under construction at one time, and then the staging. I think when you come in, you'll have to identify also the staging for each grouping, and maybe, you know, no more than, I don't know, Pete, if we need it, no more than three at a time, four at a time?
I think what will control, I think, I think what will control, I, I think what will.
That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what the proposal is. That's what I'm asking.
Let Chad respond to Victoria. I think what will control is the safety plan, because you're not going to be allowed to have piles of soil in the middle of a road and block access.
Correct.
So I think the safety plan will naturally limit where the construction areas are. Does that?
Yes.
Okay.
The 241 Fire and Safety Plan.
Yeah. Fine. So there's no concern about that.
But, but the intent, Victoria, I think is important, is that these groupings do not necessarily create the sequence. It's not a sequence that we're going to follow group one, group two, group three. We're going to try to do as, as many groups at the same time as we can. We want to literally open up, I mean, the plan is to open up the west side.
To sell out.
Yeah, you know, so to the extent we can.
I think I know what Victoria's talking about. What she's referring to is our, our phasing plans show all the staging areas and where we're going to be stockpiling and rock processing during the mass movement. What she is referring to is when you're getting to the individual construction of the buildings, where are you going to be storing whatever rock you take out of the ground at that location, whatever soil you take out. I think that's what she's getting at, and I think we can provide some clarification on that, on the plan, on the, on this staging. We can give a typical detail of how we would manage that. So.
Victoria, anything else?
I mean, when I review it, maybe, but I think this is, this is what we discussed on Monday, and I think it's the right path forward to try and give them flexibility and still make it manageable.
Thank you. Let me start to my left. Mr. Waters, any additional comments?
Well, I, I wasn't at the meeting on Monday. At some point, we had, you know, some of us had issues with the service buildings, the architecture of them, and I don't want it to get ahead of us where we don't discuss that with the architect so that we don't get too far down the rabbit hole with that. There was just some things that we were, you know, thinking about doing.
Do you have an elevation for one of the 2E buildings?
Unless changes had been made.
In the latest architectural set, Rob, we did the materiality, we made the materiality changes we talked about. There was some new articulation in the facades there. We did, you know, the slip ceilings, slip roofing and such in those buildings to accommodate the.
Any exterior materials? I believe there's.
It's like a charcoal wood.
Charcoal wood, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that's all in the latest drawings, and you might not have gotten a chance to see that yet. So, yeah, in the latest architectural set, we did the updates.
I was going to say, those were submitted separately, so it's a digital version.
We saw it on, on last Wednesday, we did.
Yes.
It didn't, it didn't look like.
These were, these were the ones from the April submission, the April 16 submission.
We looked at them last Wednesday. Can, can you call those up by chance, or do you?
If you have access to the internet, you can get them off the town.
I got them.
Website.
I'm just, I'm just trying to save time, because then it's more time redoing stuff or trying to accommodate.
I don't know which drawing. This might take a second, but, yeah. Villas.
You're a lot faster than my laptop with these.
It's probably down here. Oh, it'd be in the elevations. We didn't do renderings of that building, so hang on.
Where was that? It had its own sheet.
Yeah, yeah, but it's just an elevation. It's not a, it's not a rendering. Bear with me.
Yeah. Right, but in the elevations, that's, that's.
I was going to say, you're far down the rabbit hole, so you better get your answer tonight.
Well, that's, that's, but I've been asked, raising that question, and I just want to make sure that.
Rob, can you describe what you want to see still?
I, well, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot of massive wall on those buildings with no, you know, there's no window, you know, I don't see openings, I don't see windows. I, I had a question about one of the, I guess, the, it might be a leasehold that's next to the, the loading, the one where you're going to maybe bring in certain material that has the loading dock or something, the one that's further to the north, that service building. On the, on the side that borders somebody who's going to purchase that property, it's just, it's like 70 feet of wall and roof.
Yeah, I mean, the idea between this, this nearest villa is, there's a, there's a good amount of landscaping in between those two. And we're trying to, we're trying to shield this, just like you are, are suggesting. And I mean, it's a very basic maintenance building, you know, for equipment and such. But, yeah, I mean, the shape of the building, it's, it's where we actually, after talking to you guys about flat roads and sloping roads, we took advantage of that here. It's probably one of the few buildings that you're going to actually see from Route Nine here, certainly in the wintertime. But, you know, we felt it was a very kind of simple barn shape, some of the, you know, architectural language that we were trying to meet from the beginning of the project. And, and again, it's a charcoal wood that's going to be, you know, we're hoping it just blends into the, into the background. But I, I ask you to look at the landscaping plan in addition to this, because we do, we do surround this with, with.
Pretty heavy landscaping.
I mean, there's, there's, there's things that, like even, even just false barn doors on, on the one side or something. Things like that, that could possibly help with it. Or popping up a little bit of a shed up on the roof to just break up that massive roof. But, you know, again, I, I did, I did sketches on them, on the big plan that I had.
Yeah, I remember.
So I, I can give that to you, and, you know, you could look at it and, you know, whatever. So you'll have it. But I'm just afraid that, we're not talking about that. We're talking about all these other things, and I'm afraid it's going to get too far out. And, you know, I mean, that, because it's, it's important, everything looks very nice. Those buildings are very plain, you know, and I understand what they are. They're maintenance buildings, but they are going to be visible. So, so that's the thing. And then there was also the, what is it, the community center. The same, same thing happens with that. There's a lot of glass on it, but it's also a huge amount of running wall by the pool.
Yeah, we're actually, we're actually doing updated renderings of, of that building, and I think you probably get a good sense of, that's going to be a beautiful building. Obviously, that's, that's more, you know, customer-facing. This is really meant to be.
That's what I was saying. It didn't.
No, understood.
Appropriate for, you know, for, you know, wanting to be a part of that community. I think we. wanting to be a part of that community, I think we started.
Is, is, is that a flat roof on the back?
I think, I think some of them have it, yes. Majority of those do. But, that we discuss, we discussed with the flat roofs and stuff, I think we, we have a good grasp of that, but it's, it's just, you know, I, like I said, I have quick little things I did to just get my thoughts, rather than put it in words, I could, I could show you something, and then you could say, "The guy's cra, the guy's crazy," or whatever. I, I don't really care.
Yeah, I mean, you know, make, applying some things here to take it, make it a little bit more exciting, maybe a little bit more in keeping with what's going on on the site, like a canopy above a door.
Yeah.
It's something we can certainly consider, we'd have to talk to the ownership about where they wanna spend their money.
Because with landscaping, you know, trees blow down.
No, understood.
They get cut.
I got you.
Removed, and then you're still left with the structure. That doesn't usually change.
Rob, if you would, why don't you give, I mean, you two have had this dialogue before.
I have the plans in my head.
Have a dialogue, let it do it. I mean, what, you know, what, what we've been able to do, we've done.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
And we'll certainly consider it, and perhaps if we don't get to a final before the 5th, we can make that a condition, that we finish that conversation, but that's a specific condition.
Right.
I just throw that out, but let's start the dialogue. We have three weeks.
Exactly.
Let's see if we can do it.
Just to be clear, architecture can't be a condition. It's too...
Too vague, yeah.
Just so we're on the same page.
Well, we'll have, we'll have the footprint, we've got the general, but I think there's a little bit of finch. Let's try to get it done, but let's try to be flexible. So, anything could be a condition.
I'll get Michael, like, before he leaves, I can give him the plans, if I get them all.
They're out in the truck.
Yeah.
They're out in the truck. I want to point out for the board, as I go down and kind of poll each of you, please weigh in on what your thoughts are on the architecture. Also, Mr. Gaddy was correct, as you're driving down south on Route Nine, particularly during leaf-off, you take a right, you take a look where that emergency road is, you're going to see these two sides of the building.
Yes.
North and south. North, yeah, I'm sorry, north and south. But you'd have to kind of look over your shoulder, that way if you're going north. It's gonna be definitely evident. That's one of the reasons why I had the concerns about the hotspots on that side of the building, because during the winter, that would draw your eye over to that building. I don't want people thinking that this is someplace they need to go, 'cause that's not a real, that's only an emergency access, that's it.
Right. And, and the west side is across from the community center, I think, or, or close, I think, right?
Kind of out of the way.
Well, we're just talking about X1, X2, right?
Just, just those two.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Isn't it two and three?
I mean, those, those were...
These two and three?
The other ones, I think we, we had a good grasp of, the community center was the other one that I noticed, that's all.
It's not, it's not much, it's, but, but it's, it's enough to be, to be concerned,
that's all.
Are there no OSHA requirements for having windows in buildings?
There's windows in the building, there's a few.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Is there no minimum requirement for how many windows? I have no idea.
I gotta be honest, I don't know either, but I can check. I'll check that, yeah.
Maintenance building, you mean?
Like, like, for instance, where the charger is for your golf carts, there's, there's no covering at all. They could get, you know, I mean, unless you're bringing them in to be charged, that could just have just like, just a little bit of the extended roof, that's all. It's just little things like that, that might, you know, and I, I know Lou is, he's getting...
Lou's not breathing.
Yeah, but, but, but I, I'm sure Lou, I'm sure Michael talked to Lou, and it's not, it's not crazy. It's not crazy stuff.
He stopped breathing about five minutes ago.
Please, Lou, don't, don't do that, because...
He can breathe now.
His lips are getting blue.
Can you also weigh in on their request to waive for their fire department review?
Yes.
What was that?
Weigh in on your opinion on the fire department review versus the turf, the turf...
A certification versus a letter from the fire department.
That, I don't, you know, I, I don't really know that particular thing, but...
I don't mean, it's not funny.
No, what, what is it, though? What is it?
We're laughing 'cause Ray's staring at him as the answer's...
Remember, he said they're gonna, they've done all these meetings, and that turf is gonna write certification.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's funny.
Whether or not, it's 100% in alliance with the fire department.
We were, we were planning on setting up another meeting to go over the fire, water, the, the water, the staging, and also making sure the comments were fully addressed, but the applicant had asked you to not require that.
Yeah, but if, if the, if the fire department has worked with this company before, and is, knows their, you know, what they're, they're doing, I'm sure they're gonna be in compliance with everything.
Yeah, and, and I might add, we've, we've responded to every request he's had, we plan on responding to any requests he has.
Yeah.
Right, and, and typically, he will always add a little, another note, which is awesome. But, yeah.
Yeah, so then I'm, I, I guess I'm okay then with, with that.
Ms. Waters, comments?
Well, I don't have architectural comments. I, I defer to Rob's, he's usually pretty sensitive and has a keen eye on these things, so I'll, I'll leave those buildings to him. Regarding the fire department, with all due respect to all parties, I just want to see where we are in a week, but conceptually, I don't have a problem in giving in, okay, I just wanna read the actual, what the final report says, so, what the final certification says, okay? I guess you're not gonna certify now, but I just wanna see where we are in, in another week or so.
Compliance, yeah.
And I will apologize that I, I won't be here on the 5th to vote, I have a prior important engagement, but I'll, I'll be, I'll be thinking of you, hoping you're getting your vote.
Do you want them to try and see if they get it in the next week? Is that what you're asking?
Well, for the 5th, I'll respond. I mean, you, you know, I'll, even though I won't be here, but I'm not, I'm not gonna be here to vote, so I, that's a fair statement on my part. I just wanna thank you also for your professionalism, for drilling down on the details, for the responsiveness. I get a sense you have more clarity, which is always a good thing, maybe sooner than you wanted it, but that's it.
Thank you, Stephanie. Vice Chair.
I'm thrilled at the, the way you have approached the phasing, because at the last meeting, I didn't know which end was up, and this just now seems very clear, and I'm so very happy, 'cause I feel that makes a much better project when you start to advance on it. From the fire department, I guess with, with all due respect, I rely on our, on our fire department to basically tell me if I'm comfortable with, and you guys have done a lot of work, I'm, I'm not saying you haven't, but I want the, I want a letter from the fire department. This would, if we didn't do this, I think this would be the first time ever that we have not said to our local fire department, "Please just sign off." And with all the work you've done, I don't doubt that we will get it, but I am not comfortable for a project of this size not asking our, I mean, you know, their, their core, their key. I want, I want them to be included, and I, I want their sign off.
Anything else?
That's all.
No, thank you. Vice Chair Oliver?
We'd like to thank the applicants. I think this is another great example of how we can get to a better project, working together as a, you know, the offline meetings, the, the board, the consultants, the applicant. So, thank you for that and your level of detail and, and attention to, to the detail with the changes, been phenomenal. I would have to agree with my colleague Ann on the fire department, mainly in due because the, our local district knows what they can do, knows their manpower, their equipment, et cetera, and although it may meet the certification, there may, may be a specific, you know, instance where they understand their equipment's not going to work for this, although it will meet a, you know, a national standard, so, and I, I agree, it would be, you know, I don't wanna set that precedence that, you know, now an applicant can give us a certification saying it meets the standard where our district is not comfortable with it, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Garcia?
I, I agree with Ann. This seems like we're relying on some assumptions here, and I would like to hear from the fire department, and I would hope that we could be able to expedite hearing from the fire department, just to confirm if we're in, in alignment. As far as the architecture, I look at maintenance buildings as not to be seen, okay? You want them to blend and hide, not actuate the maintenance buildings. I mean, there's things that you can do to make them look presentable, instead of one big giant block building, but you don't want them seen, especially in a resort. You don't want the areas to be seen, you don't want the equipment, the...
Can you speak to the speaker, please, we can hear right there?
I said, you don't want the maintenance buildings to be seen, or the equipment, et cetera, so...
Keep them simple.
Keep them simple, and hide. So, but if the fire department, I, like Ann said, we rely on the fire department, they know what they're doing, so I would hope that we could push and see if we could get it, you know, quicker, but...
That was very clear, John, thank you very much. Before I seek audience comments, let me just weigh in and say that I think that maintenance buildings usually don't wanna be seen at all, you're right, but these are. It's by a major road that you'll be using to, if you're gonna go to dine at the Culinary Institute, et cetera, and I trust your judgment, I think that some simple things, whether it's a fake barn door or something, might help. If you can take a look at what John said.
Well, just something to, I mean, with people going by this, they're gonna, you don't wanna just see nothing there, because you're still gonna see them, and remember, this is an all-year-round operation, so when it's leaf-off over there, you're gonna really see them from other villas. So, I think making them as attractive as possible isn't a bad thing, but I'm, I'm very sensitive to the cost, Mr. Dorso, so...
Yes, yeah.
We, we hate seeing things value-engineered when they come back to nothing, so we bear that in mind. As to the fire department, I would like to see a meeting and get a final sign off saying it's safe, because that's what, that's the issue they seem to be raising, is safety. And as I recall, there was a question as to whether you'd use the right truck for measurements, which I think you have documented, but we don't have them signing off saying yes yet, and I don't understand that, to be honest with you. That's why I'm hoping we'll have a good meeting.
Well, that was the reason why I think that I was gonna try to sit, not try, why I was going to sit in on it, because we wanna try to get a resolution there, and then that we can get like a sign off, or if there's one little bit of information that the fire department need, that's absolutely clear to the applicants what they need, so there's none of this back and forth, we're gonna sit at like a table, get it like resolved, so that these folks can move on.
I think that you are correct that there are only three issues left, and it looks as though lighting may be solved, I'm not gonna, after all my time on that one, I'm gonna wait to see what you actually present, but if that's solved, and it looks as though phasing and sequencing is solved, then we really just have the fire department, that's it. So, again, not commenting until I see what you submit, but I'm pretty sure if you tell me you got it correct, and I'm hoping you're right. And, and, I mean, you did, by the way, there are polls, there, there's lighting now in the parking areas, there were a couple that there...
Yes.
It was zero, but there was a, okay, yes. Other than that, let's see what we can do with the fire department. Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application?
Michael, before you do, I just wanna mention, we did, and I'll mention it again, I think Ray and or Dan both work lower county, and it might be easier for them to meet in White Plains, so we're happy to meet...
I'm not going to White Plains, I got news for you.
Then we'll meet up here. We thought it'd be easier for them, but...
I don't think, I don't think that Dan does, Dan doesn't work down in White Plains.
We'll meet...
He does?
He works for Metro North, Metro North.
Oh, he does?
Yes, he works for Metro North.
Before he's raised, Pete, we'll meet anywhere.
Well, no, whatever, I mean, if it's, whatever, we'll figure it out. You're paying, so I'll go.
Can this be, can this be, can this be done remotely? Could this be done remotely?
No, we wanna do in person.
Well, we need to plan.
We wanna look, we wanna sit there and look, and look like at plans, and be able to mark up stuff, and, I mean, if it means, I'll go to White Plains if that's gonna be the easiest one.
And I'll go to Alaska.
You'll go to where?
Alaska, anywhere. Let's just get a dime.
What about, you know, Maine?
See another review of this.
Huh? What about like your place in Maine?
Any of my place. Whatever it takes, Pete. Let's do it this week, next week.
So, a suggestion would be for Mr. Gaddy and Mr. Waters to kind of meet and discuss, and see what, once you have a chance to take a look at what he has, then we can, we can see what's there. I'm not sure how to make that a condition if we needed to, but if we had like something
reasonable that changes a little bit architecturally, we could always just have that as a condition, add it back into the set.
Are we, just moving forward, we're gonna get this grouping plan and the fire...
And the lighting.
...have to be put onto the real plans, and the lighting plan. Are we getting a new plan set that will be the approvable set, or not?
We'd ultimately have to have a, an approvable set.
Do you, so, do you want us to submit substitute pages as soon as possible? Do you want a whole new set?
Well, that, I mean, that's why I'm asking.
That's a good question.
Question.
Ms. Moss, Ms. Moss is looking pain.
Because otherwise, it's gonna be a condition, like it's incorporated into the plans, and I, that's...
You know, it's up, it's up to the board, what you are interested or feel like you need to see. Sometimes we have conditions that a note be added, or that this be changed anyway. It's, it's a lot to do.
I was going to say, I thought that, remember, the lots have to be merged, so there's some information that will change on the sheets, so I don't know that it's gonna be...
But that won't happen until it's recorded, so that might be a condition.
Right, right, exactly. So, there's gonna be, there're probably gonna be changes anyway.
There will be.
Yeah.
So, do you wanna make conditions on the specific sheets that we will then submit and finalize?
Conditions, our conditions usually are specific to sheets.
Oh, my gosh.
It takes a little longer for Victoria to have to craft and her, her people with her, but it's easier that way for us to see that the condition's been met. You know, C132 needs blah, 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 you just go to C132 and there it is.
Yeah, we do, we do that on the sheet.
Makes sense.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application?
I'm sorry. It might be helpful not to even have the printed copy yet, but to have one full digital submission with all the changes in it, so that we can go through it for the, the resolution version.
So, so, I just wanna make sure I understand. So, we would be submitting to you the revised lighting, the revised landscaping, the grouping, I'm sorry, the build-out plan along with the prerequisite notes?
You want the holes?
Well, I mean, I think we should see the, I think we need to see the lighting and grouping and give you comments on them first, but prior to being able to approve it, we're gonna need a set.
You want one digital final set, so at least you don't start figuring...
Not yet, not, let me stop, let's stop right now, sorry. I'm just gonna leap in. We don't want anything full yet, we want all the partials, that's it.
Yep.
That's, that's what I'm referring to, sending the partials, is what I wanted to give you.
Because the full plan sets, we need to change anyway, and it may change more with the, the architecture could be submitted later on separately as well.
My intention is to have the lighting, the landscaping, the group, the build-out plan, and then the revised architectures for X1, X2, and X3.[1648.12] and then the revised architectures for X-1, X-2, and X-3.
Perfect.
Or two and three.
X-2 and 3.
Two and three.
What? Two and three.
Not one. I don't know.
They'll have to go through and calculate.
What's wrong with X-1?
Can you, can you hear Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Chat, can you say that again?
I was just asking if there were going to be any changes to the ESC or SWIP maps, and Chris said no.
So then we don't need those.
Thank you. If there's no member of the public that would like to speak, then make it a motion to adjourn this public hearing to June the 5th.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll be in contact before then.
Great. Thank you.
As always.
Coming back. Yes.
I also want to say thank you to the board. I too will not be present on June 5th. I have, it's my daughter's birthday, so I promised I'd spend it with you.
You kind of need to be a good dad, Chris, to be a good engineer at times.
And I'm going to the birthday.
You know, we can always wait until July 7.
Looks like you're on your own.
But, but thank you for all your help in moving this project forward and all your input.
Of course.
All right. Thank you.
By the way, Lou, I haven't said this yet, but I've been meaning to say it over and over again. If there, I haven't said this yet, but I've been meaning to. If there's a problem with us finishing by June 5th, I can set a special meeting with just this as an agenda for the 6th, the 7th, whatever. We would just have you, that would be it. But I don't think that would be a problem.
Right, that's, that's true.
Just letting you know. No, we, we usually do them like Friday at 5:00. I just have to have a way to advertise it in advance in case somebody wants to come. But you've seen no member of the public. Yes, we, we know. Don't worry.
Seventeen. That's, uh.
We, we could set a meeting.
We could do special meetings.
We could do special meetings.
We do special meetings. Let's have the advertising.
Could be the end of June, you know, two weeks.
It doesn't have to.
Don't worry, we're going to get you through before the July 17th, one way or the other.
When are you going to be, what? It's the beginning of the season. It'll all work out. I don't know how, but it's a, it's a mystery. Stay positive.
Of course. The next item on the agenda is Anderson Center. The applicants are seeking approval to raise an existing structure and add in a new, I think attractive, but bigger structure, to, for the same functions, et cetera. As part of the process, they're also redoing the entry, including gates. I believe you got your ZBAA variances for the gates, gate height, et cetera?
For this entry stone wall height, they are, my understanding is they are ready to approve that pending secret determination.
Oh, us, that's what we're doing tonight, right. I was there at the meeting, I should have remembered that, sorry.
I hope your lights stay on now, it seems.
Make it a motion to reopen the public area.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let me turn it over to you, Ryan.
I could give a quick, brief overview. I'll try to be brief, Pete.
Yeah, thank you.
The existing campus along Route 9, the existing Dellenwood building is located on the southwestern corner. The main entrance currently uses on the southeastern corner of the property. This is existing service entrance next to the nursing home and the school, and trying to keep up with its populations, its demands, its student needs, and just general site improvements, is seeking to raise this building and then make improvements on the entryway, as well as a couple additional, additional storage, bulk storage items for just incidental items you would find on, on a campus that you need to store. So again, this is the existing entryway. We have the existing stone walls along the corners with the little curved stone entryway. This is the service road that heads up to Dellenwood. This comes on over to the main education building. This is the existing Dellenwood. This is that service road that comes up and around. This would go over to the former Manswood Mansion, which is now a park after it was raised a couple of number of years ago, existing Dellenwood entryway with various parking areas for that structure. This would be the approximate location of the walking trail, as per some filed documents. It's not necessar, that trail didn't have a definitive meets and bounds, it just had an image, if you will, and it's, it's fairly representative of what is there currently and marked and available to the public. These are the improvements, former Dellenwood removed, new Dellenwood wastewater treatment plant to be replaced due to end of service life and to increase the capacity to serve this additional flow and any future needs for the campus. Again, these existing laws have been removed for larger ones, which we're getting the variances for. We're providing gates here to have a more secure access, so they can have better control on who's coming and going throughout the day. This is the new Dellenwood. This is where the existing former one was. Since the last prior meeting, we've, I made some changes to this as I've tried to finalize some of the technical details, including stormwater and a couple of other items that I've, I missed at that time, one being the, let me see, I'll zoom in on this one, it's a little better, the utility plan here. These were originally directly facing the building. We've reoriented them to face the, the curb cut, so anyone that's pulling into this area can pull directly in there. This has been widened to 24 feet, so we can have back and forth traffic. This has been more or less finalized for that dry swell. It's, it's not super deep. This area would be the more level than that with an underdrain, which would come out to the existing stream area. It's not really, it's an intermittent stream you go out there right now. It's wet, well, last couple of weeks you might see a little water, but there's a lot of leaves and stuff there, everything just kind of collects and sits. The main discharge, this has been slightly upgraded. This all flows from if the, kind of the ridge here, existing ridge in front of this, it all flows down directly into this. I moved the refuse enclosure, it was at the end of the road. I moved this over here, refuse truck can pull right in, slide back up, and continue on its way up to the upper, a lot if it has to change. With that gone, snow removal operations would be greatly improved. There's plenty of room here now for any pushing of snow. I left a little tail here, it's a little narrower than the parking space, a typical parking space in Stripe to try to deter anyone from thinking it looks like an attractive place to park. It's meant to turn around, so we should have a little spot to turn around and keep going. With the, with those changes and the width, I changed the alignment of this slightly and pulled these, provide curbs and pulled these out a little bit, so this is a little more channelized now. A little less pavement, looks more like a giant Y and maybe more of an offshoot now from main, the main drag, if you will. And I've been able to eliminate, this was all originally being cut out for parking spaces, and because I, I tagged a couple on here, I was able to eliminate that big cut out of what's probably going to be mostly rock. So that should ease construction. Those are the, the main changes here. The landscaping has been provided, has been, provided to reflect these revisions. The, these are rain gardens. I've added some rain gardens, so again, this is kind of, if you were to picture, this is kind of the top of the ridge before we start heading down. It's going to be a little tough to get this section of roofline to the front, realistic without pipes hanging out all over the place, which is a terrible idea. So we're just going to have these roof leaders discharged to rain gardens, this grating slightly pulled out, just because these rain gardens do have to be somewhat close to level to, to work properly. I'm providing three for the back half of the roof and the future greenhouse. The manufacturer is working on his official submittals and technical details for this wastewater plant. The only change I really had to do was move these out three feet. That was his requirement to make this elbow, because this is a non-standard arrangement for them, just to accommodate the, that waterway here. Again, Dellenwood is currently occupied, will remain occupied, so we will construct a new one, new building, while continuing the use of the existing one. Once that's built and fit for occupancy, we can shift everything over and then raise the Dellenwood. Raise it, move it, sell the pieces off, if anyone wants a memento. It's not cooperating. So again, the overall site plan. This, this area right here, this is the main entrance, this is a gravel, existing gravel parking area, it's not really improved. They've used it previously for staging large construction projects. It's, it's isolated, it's easily fenced off. We will be using that as needed for any of the entryway improvements. They can also store some stuff, equipment they might need for the Dellenwood area. In addition, we can also isolate this area readily in the vicinity of the, the communications tower that's over there, similar to what, when it was constructed. So that's a little closer, it's, it's probably not what I would call the primary area. I would keep anything just because it is closer to the campus. But if, if need be, you know, they can keep some clean, clean equipment or anything. We're not going to drag muddle through the site or anything like that. During construction here, it's not shown, but that service entrance can be used for full access to the, to the campus. Buses, they've done this previously when they were doing the main education facility and such, so that we would, that's our plan right now, is to utilize that. So I think that's a brief overview of the main, the main points. It's my quickest presentation, I think, yet with them, so.
For the, the service entries, so you would actually be telling vendors, everyone else, that you can't use the main entrance for that time period?
For that time, yeah, they would have to notice all the employees and everybody in the loop.
As well as parents of, or family members, I should say, of those who reside there, because we have, I have neighbors who, their child is there. So it's been an educational through thing for a bit at first, but we've seen it at the CIA, as soon as they put everything up, people were like, oh, go to the other entrance. It'll be logical.
Is there going to be a sign there?
The spun entrance, still have a, a sign.
The, the alternate.
A temporary sign to say alternate.
We can add a temporary sign in that vicinity. There's currently is an existing sign that says service entrance.
Service, I was going to say, it's already signed there.
It's not, there is a sign saying that there is Anderson access there. We would include that in the notice that would have to be circulated.
One of my comments was, if you need any additional signage on 9, you're going to have to go, you're going to have to go to the state for that, which is okay. I mean, it's just.
Yeah, we're, the, the contractor, we're going to put the allowance on them to permit with, with their insurance and whatnot to come up with any traffic signage that they might need and, and maintain all of that in conformance with anything DOT might need.
Well, that's right, because you're going to need, oh, that's right, because you're going to need a DOT permit anyways. No, I mean, are you doing?
No, we're, all of the improvements to the entrance are on our side of the DOT line.
All right, well, if you need a permit, you'll go get it for the, you know, signage, if they feel, if you feel like you need any additional signage directional to get people to Anderson School Road, right?
Yes.
Anything else? Thank you. Let me start, I was going to say, I'm not hearing the plan yet for how we're going to handle the traffic entering and exiting during construction, but you concluded with that, so. Bonnie, any comments?
So I looked at the new submission. I think the lighting plan has to be further revised, and if you have any building exterior lights, especially toward the Hudson, they need to be shown. So, you know, I'm sure we'll work with you, we'll get you a comment letter out, but we did address it in the proposed negative declaration that it would be updated. So that's the one in particular element that I saw that needed some, some revisions.
Yep. Thank you. Pete?
So we, we had a comment letter May 11th, and, so my first one was at the, at the entrance up to the gate, you're proposing curbing. Is that right?
Oh, yes, we're showing the curbing.
But there's no, but there's no drain it's shown, so what's going to happen to the water that's trapped?
We are looking at potentially putting a small catch basin, if there's any existing pipe in that general vicinity.
Do you need to have like curbing there?
I don't know that we necessarily need it.
I'm just, because if you're going to put in curbing, I mean, you should do something with drainage.
No, right.
Look, it doesn't really affect the town, it affects, you know, Anderson School if you got, you know, water sitting around, you know, and ice, you know, in the winter time, so it's really, you know, it's your, it's your like call, but.
They're starting an ice skating program, I hear, don't you guys? No, the pond, the.
Well, if you're going to have, if you're going to have, if you're going to have curbing, you should do something with drainage. I don't know what the soils are like there, if you could put dry wells or if it's crappy soil, that's not going to work.
The soils on site are generally not good. The entranceway is a little better than the rest of the study.
All right, whatever, just do something with it, I, you know.
Yep.
All right, as far as drainage. So, you know, the SWIP, I said that you're going to like provide that. I'm not concerned about this not having a SWIP before we make a secret determination, because, you know, the site's, the site's, you know, isolated and it's not going to be a very complicated SWIP. I think your staging areas, you need to just look at, look at, you know, your staging areas for the new Dellenwood and more so for the wastewater treatment plant, and make sure that in, you know, your SWIP, you include, you know, enough area for staging. You're going to need a pretty decent-sized staging area for the wastewater treatment plant, because they're going to need to store equipment. They're probably going to have to have like a crane set up to put them, put them in a place, so.
Yep.
You're going to need a pretty good area, which, which, you know, is fine. It's just make sure you incorporate that in your grading and erosion control plans that are going to be part of the SWIP. And then da, 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 we talked about construction, construction traffic at the new entrance. You said that if we, we're going to have any detour signs or any special signage out along 9, that you'll go for, you'll go get the DOT permit, your contractor will. That's it.
Thank you, Pete. Ms. Moss, any comments?
No, no comments.
Ms. Pardara?
No comments.
Just a quick educational moment for my colleagues. When Anne, I was first appointed, I took, I looked at stormwater as being a secret impact, drainage, et cetera. Over the years, I'm talking to the engineers, you're going to have a SWIP. The SWIP is either accepted or not. So you work out whatever details may still be necessary as part of the SWIP before it's accepted. So I myself have kind of concluded that we can do secret without having all this stormwater stuff done, because it's going to be done or the project goes away either way, because you have to have a SWIP in these cases. So just wanted to, you might have any questions about that, because I remember.
The only thing, the only thing that I was, the only thing that I would say to that is that if, if like we felt, or I guess, well, we, I felt that depending where the project was on any site, if there was, if there was, if there was a direct path of water off-site onto somebody's adjacent property, and there's the potential to cause damage, then we would require like a preliminary SWIP.
Correct.
So that we could be sure that they're going to take care of it. In this case, like I said, and like what you're saying, is that it's pretty isolated, it's, it's not going to hurt, it's not going to harm anybody, it's a fairly simple like SWIP, so, so it's kind of on a case-by-case basis, but in general, what you're saying, what you're saying is true.
I can recall the first hotel that we approved on the CIA campus, or that portion that the CIA owns, that was a traditional hotel, one building, four stories or five, five stories, but it was on rock, and they had so many problems with stormwater management that I remember the location physically changed, so we kept that one at a bay until we felt like they were close enough to getting to secret. In addition, that's of course also the water drains right down into the Hudson, so it was a bigger issue as well. But I just want to let, make sure everybody understands that we do secret. Okay. Victoria, any other comments?
I mean, I guess I'll say, it's the same with the lighting tonight, because the site is so large and it's a residential building, instead of waiting to have every single light fixture, there's a determination that so long as the fixtures comply with what the code requires and the limits in the code, that there won't be a secret impact. But in some cases, you know, you are going to want more detail, sensitive areas, et cetera.
If this were a brand-new site, the size, we would want to look at all the lighting immediately, because it's replacing also a building that is already there that has lights on the exterior.
Right.
That unless you propose cleat lights, which we're not going to get through this more anyways, you know, this should be no, no impact.
That's hard enough.
That's why we're ready to move forward. Has anyone had a chance to read that this was emailed out to you, part two and part three for the environmental assessment form by Bonnie?
I had just one comment I wanted to ask about the pedestrian access. So I'm watching the culinary as they're building their new gates. It's a different configuration, both entrances are right on Route 9. They have carved out a little mini pedestrian access as they're building the, the larger gate. And I, I just heard how you were describing, I'm just wondering, for people who ride buses, so they're going to have to get out by the nursing home and walk down the hill and then in through that gate?
I believe that they do have a location on campus that the buses can draw up off and the buses can turn around readily. I think you've, we've done that the last.
Like the loop bus? No, I'm talking about the loop bus. So Pete, you have, you have a bunch of people who take the loop bus to get there, and I'm just thinking of how they're going to access the site. What they did at the culinary is they literally cut a little hole in their stone wall and made it into it. They put a little gravel path, and I know that you're going to be constructing all
They have carved out a little mini pedestrian access as they're building the larger gate, and I just heard how you were describing, I'm just wondering, for people who ride buses, so they're gonna have to get out by the nursing home and walk down the hill and then in through that gate?
I believe that they do have a location on campus that the buses can draw up off and the buses can turn around readily. I think you've, we've done that the last...
Like the loop bus? No, I'm talking about the loop bus. So, Pete, you have, you have a bunch of people who take the loop bus to get there, and I'm just thinking of how they're going to access the site. What they did at the culinary is they literally cut a little hole in their stone wall and made it into it, they put a little gravel path, and I know that you're gonna be constructing all through there, but it's only temporary, it's only for them to walk around so they can get into the site. That's what I'm asking is for...
We've all seen the workers waiting by the main entrance for a bus to take them back or dropping off in the morning.
We can create a small area there that's...
It's just temporary, it's a construction only.
Temporary. It might be a little bit farther up or down from the entrance, if nothing else, just because it needs to be walkable.
We want them to be safe. Not too close to the construction of everything, yes.
Where did you say, south, south or north?
South, I think.
I would probably think south, there's a very, it goes up pretty high.
I think the wall that you're fixing anyway there, I think, isn't there?
It's gonna be a beautiful wall.
Right, but during the construction it could be...
That's gonna be, we're gonna use those stones we do have to remove to rebuild the other section, so it's all gonna be part of that work.
So, you can break the path through there temporarily?
The, that's probably gonna be one of the first things constructed is the, that entryway and stone paths. Just, just the way it's gonna work out with mobilizing for the, for wastewater treatment plant and the timing, there's a very long lead time to get those constructed. They all get constructed off-site and shipped in. And so, we're, basically, we're gonna place it, it's a manufactured unit, we're not bringing individual components...
Building it.
And building it, no, it's gonna come in on a truck and a couple pieces, and a crane's gonna drop it, and it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be installed like that.
And that's getting done first?
The entryway is probably gonna be constructed first, because there's such a long lead time to get those constructed. The manufacturers, as I said, they've had some difficulties with...
They wouldn't be able to bring that, that equipment in through that front entrance?
The, that would probably go through the service entrance, but once the main entryway with the gate is done, which would be one of the first steps, we can go back to...
Right, understood. Anyway, I just wanted to bring up the temporary access for pedestrians...
No, absolutely.
Who take the bus. And I would never even thought of it, but I see it every day at the culinary.
And it's a great point, it's one I started to make sure that Brian follows up on this so that we know that there's a way for them to access it.
Otherwise, I don't have any comments, other comments.
Mr. Garcia, any comments?
Uh, no.
Mr. Oliver?
I have no comments.
Ms. Wasser?
No.
Mr. Waters?
Thank you for the tweaking that you did on the point.
I, I think it's an improvement in most ways, and the comments have helped improve the site with some of the tweaks, so...
Anna and I were talking, that's really a great location for the dumpster...
Yeah.
In terms of the access.
Yes.
To be honest, I don't know, I didn't think of it to begin with. I mean...
It's probably the late nights.
Early mornings.
Early mornings.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, when do you want us to adjourn this to, because we're gonna take seeker, we're gonna act on seeker tonight. What else do we have waiting from you? We have some...
They need to respond to the consultant comments that are forcing them to do.
Right, but that's basically it, I think.
They're gonna go off of the variances.
The ZBA closed the public hearing, so this is, they, they, they agreed to extend the time in which, if we take action tonight, they don't have to take, it's been less than 30 days, put it that way, so they can take action in a week from tonight.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Would you like to, for us to adjourn this to June or July?
Let's, let's go for June.
Make a motion to adjourn this to June 5th?
So moved.
Second.
I'll, if ever, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions, okey-dokey. And Mr. Oliver, you got this resolution?
Resolution adopting a termination of significance, negative declaration, Anderson Center for Autism Dellenwood Site Plan, resolution number 2023-56A, whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby adopts a negative declaration for the reasons set forth in parts two and three of the FEAF, finding that the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. Be it further resolved that the planning board secretary is hereby directed to provide notice to this, of this negative declaration to all involved and interested agencies.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll, if ever, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Ballard Avenue Coffee Shop. Make a, did I, can we reopen?
No, we need to reopen.
Make a, make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
I'll, if ever, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this is to remove a portion of a building located on 9G that's been very, most recently it was Butchy's Barbecue, changing around the site pretty substantially, including adding curbing, lots of landscaping, and there was a suggestion at the last meeting made about maybe having a higher fence on the border. And John, I was, or Councilman Lombardi, I was incorrect, it's very specific in the zoning that says that signs are part of the bulk, fences are part of the bulk regulations. I thought maybe we could vary those ourselves without the ZBA, but not possible, so it's written. Thank you, Tad. Mr. Burda, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, good evening. Just a quick little recap on where we're at. We, we have, we received yesterday afternoon a draft copy of the traffic study. I did forward a copy over to Cynthia. It has not gone to this, it's going to the state tomorrow, so until we get some comments back from them again, I did wanna issue it just to avoid any confusion.
Makes sense.
The plan that he has done, it does include both entrances, the right turn only and the, and the dual, and he demonstrated to the state that there's more than enough sightline, sight distance.
Good. I hope they agree.
We're hopeful, we're hopeful. And, you know, and he's also explaining to them that the entrance can't really move any further north because of the pole that's there, so, and that we did the best we could. And he's also showing that turnarounds, you know, truck access, so, you know, coming in and out of the site. So, hopefully, he's, it appears that he's addressed all the comments satisfactorily to them.
Great. I guess if you need help with DOT or if he needs help, contact us. We can try to speed things along because it's variable as to how long things take once it goes, once it disappears into the mall.
It's a black hole.
The black hole, the mall.
Well, I will say that he was, when he made the first admission, as an architect, I made the first admission, he didn't like that, but he was, it was about an eight-day turnaround, so it was very quick.
That's very fast.
Good.
Oh, that was built. Yeah, you know, the permit engineer, just where it sometimes tend to get lost when it gets over to the main office.
Traffic. That's the issue.
Yeah.
That's where maybe we can be helpful if you need this.
We will certainly rely on you if we have to. Thank you.
Ms. France, any comments?
Not this time.
Mr. Sotero?
No, I think on your last plan, I think you put some arrows on the driveway to try to get people going to the drive-thru that when they come in, instead of going into the, into the parking lot, did you put, did you do something with a little backup area in that, in that, you know, parking lot?
Well, yes, I did.
You did?
I eliminated one spot and I, I put a turnaround in.
Okay.
You know, backup area, so you did that.
Other than that, no, I didn't.
And the other thing that was a suggestion that was on one of the view letters, is that we put a stripe to the drive-thru where the bypass is, we put a stripe there, so people will see.
Ms. Moss, any comments?
No.
Ms. Pardaro?
No.
Anything from the board, colleagues?
Did you bring copies of the architecture?
I did, I did. I have them here. I'm reluctant to give them to you, only because when you see the picture on the screen, these do not represent it.
Colors are, the colors are off.
The color, when they printed it, the colors are off. I'm happy to give it to you, but I understand the digital copy is the correct one.
You're gonna show us some material, you have this anyway, so...
Yeah, before, yeah, before we got there.
So, to do the big reveal...
I just wanted to make sure that you guys are...
Mr. Burda and Mr. Waters collaborated on some changes that are fairly simple.
Yeah, I took into what you were saying, we talked about change the columns over from round to square, and what I did is the canopy that's in the front, I shortened that because it's a canopy, I really need the canopy around the building higher to hide the equipment.
Okay, yeah.
So, we did that, and then I lowered the, the stone wall slightly. So, when John and I went back and forth on the colors and, you know, the blue theme looks, you know, we kinda settled on that. He didn't like my first choice.
All right, it's good, it's nice.
Most people up here know my favorite color's blue, we never see it, so, that's...
I did not know, honest to God, I did not know that.
It's not bad nature.
And Sonia, blue bonnets, I can tell you all the nature things that are blue. I've got news for ya.
Panzies.
My house, my chairs, all three cars, they're all, they're all frictions on blue.
It's on the side of the road, they're so...
Yes.
I thought you drove a black car.
No, they're all blue.
Dark blue.
It's interesting, because even looking right now between the screen and, yeah, and the computer, the one on the bottom is darker.
Yeah, but it's actually, in reality, it's lighter on the top, it's just, I don't know, something about it is just not, it's not depicting it, so we'll get you real samples.
Yeah.
Now that, now that I know that you guys, it's, you know, we might have a couple little tweaks, but what I'll do is, you know, when we come back, I'll bring in color, actual color chips.
Perfect, thank you, Mike. Mr. Waters?
No, thank you, thank you for listening and being open to it, and I...
Always.
I think it looks, it looks really nice.
Thank you.
I think it looks very nice.
Stephanie?
No further comment.
Ms. Dexter?
I wanted to know if we could do a site visit. I'm driving by that place every day and I'm noticing there's tons of stuff get, that got, that's being staged there? I don't know what's going on. There's mounds of things.
Work in progress.
There's, uh, big, big concrete things, there's a big fence around the building, it looks like, you started working on the building?
Yeah, yeah, it looks like it's the same, it's the same terminology as everybody uses, like, proceed at your own risk. Drywall's in the back, we had a flooded area, and now they're starting to dry out. All that stone that's piled there, this Saturday, we're going to excavate all them drywalls up while the car count is at a minimum level and redo all the catch basins in the rear to stop the flooding, because to do anything on one side of the port properly compared to the other, it's only less than a half acre, so I gotta kinda do it. Last Saturday, we were there cleaning up the one side so we can kinda move the cars around so that we don't interfere with the people in the back while we're trying to get the drainage and everything back to normal.
Okay.
Nothing on the building?
No, there's, no, there's, there's changes, there's...
Well, you're demoing, right? You're just demoing.
I didn't know that we could do that.
We're signing now, we welcome the back door so that we can start taking, there was a bar in there and everything that's not applicable that's been... So, you're gutting, you're gutting.
Yeah, just...
Demo. The bar and all the refrigeration equipment that was in there from the cafe that's been sitting there for a year and a half has no need to, for what I'm doing in the future or now, so...
Same thing with the exhaust hood.
Exhaust hoods, we don't, we don't need the exhaust hood with the vents and all that stuff, because we're not doing any of that cooking or whatever.
Okay, I thought we weren't, I thought when you were under site plan review that modifications to the site, unless they were, you know...
Well, the drywalls are getting repaired only because they're failing, so he's trying to stop it from flooding out.
The stone drywalls, catch basins, that's all the stuff that's in the back, the stone is piled there.
I don't know. If Tad's, if Tad's not raising any issues, I, I just remember having site plans before us where they were, they were doing things and we had to tell them to stop.
Technically, what we're doing right now is repair.
I'm not aware of anything that's going on on the site. There have been no building permit applications made. I don't know that anything that he's doing requires a building permit, but I'm not aware of anything.
There's a lot of activity and a lot of staging of equipment and materials.
For buildings. So, I...
Okay. I, I'm not, I'm just not used to this. Usually, you go into a freeze pattern, we've had, I mean, we have been very...
That is typically the situation.
We, that's also...
But if we are preparing for flooding, I've got...
Yeah, I mean, and I get that, I, I mean, I get that, I do understand.
Because that could be mold.
So, I think also part of the reason is we're normally under seeker, because you're not supposed to do alterations or any changes until you're done, but this was a type-two action.
That's right.
So, they're not falling under seeker.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, all those little pieces make a difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I would like to do a site visit, just because I drive it by every single day and I'm looking going, it's a pretty tight site. And what's interesting is this morning I was going into work, it was about eight o'clock, and a Jovan truck, for whatever reason, was trying to make a left-hand turn into the site, and the traffic was backed up past, past that bar, because he couldn't make a turn, because it's a very busy, and I just, I continue to be very concerned about the traffic for there.
George O's.
Georgie O's, yes.
Georgie O's, yeah.
Yes, and it, you know, it doesn't even back up that much for the buses, because the buses stop and move on, but this car couldn't, this Jovan truck, and it was going into the site, and I know we had discussed that everything was leaving the site and didn't come back. Anyway, I just, I have my concerns, and then I was remembering that when the Dunkin' Donuts on Route 9G was proposing a drive-thru, we, we tried to look at it every which way and we just, we couldn't come up with something that could work and handle the volumes, which is why they don't have a drive-thru.
I think that nine-page submission that the MJ Engineering just submitted and we just got, I'm sure you didn't get a chance to review it.
I was looking through, I actually, did that get sent to us? Because I saw the cover...
I sent it this morning, this afternoon.
Well, not to me.
Yeah, sorry.
You have a different watch, you have a different watch.
Okay, yeah, we, we had...
It's a draft form, I think, that's being submitted to DOT, so it hasn't been, it's a draft form is what it was called.
It says draft on...
But I saw the cover, I saw, like, the response memo, but I didn't actually...
That was a draft response.
That was a draft response.
To the DOT.
Gotcha, okay. But anyway, as I was saying, and I, I just wanna remind my colleagues and everything that, that safety is a, is a huge issue, and we all remember the infamous coffee, Dunkin' Donuts that was at the end of Cromwell Place. It could queue, I believe it could queue 10 cars, and the other 10 queued on Route 9.
Past Cromwell.
It's actually past the laundromat. So, I am very sensitive to that, and then on top of that, Ready Coffee in Hyde Park has just opened, and as you know, we, we pulled our hair out about all this, how to make this work, because we, we were already comfortable with the fact that there were dedicated left-hand turn lanes into that site, there were, there's, from a Route 9 perspective, that didn't look like anything was gonna back up. You have a main drive aisle going in where people can go, and what is hysterical is that we asked to have the opening by the bank notched in so that it would dissuade people from making a left-hand turn. Out on social media, people are telling people, stop turning in to the main drive-out, turn in at TEG credit union, and then that way you can just come in, and it, it makes for a much more orderly circle, because when it was backed up, there were about 30 cars waiting on Friday, I think I was watching it, they were all...
Free beverages.
Well, it was free coffee, so that's why.
But they were all staged within the site, but they were all staged within the site, nobody was leaking out onto that main drive aisle going out onto Route 9, so...
They did a good job managing it.
It, it did, it was...
They had plenty of manpower, there was cones there.
It was very impressive.
Provisions to handle what was going on.
Yeah, I mean, and I want things to be successful, but I just, I see what's happening, and if you're saying that you can successfully stage 10 cars, and I'm driving past there every day, and I can see that one car trying to make a left-hand turn is backing up traffic on the northbound lane, I'm seeing, even without it being there, that there is, there are issues with this particular site.
What time, what time was that?
It was 8:00, 8:00 AM. And I, I just, I just, I'm guessing that none of my colleagues drive down that way and, but I see it all the time, and I just remember that the one on Dunk, the Dunkin' further south, we, we just couldn't find a way to, to make it work on that size site.
Excuse me. I'm gonna go ahead and just insert, because Mr. Memory here. We hired our own traffic consultant.
Yes.
At someone's suggestion who agreed that there was room. We overruled our own traffic consultant. I remember this because I was like, I, to the attorney back then, we had Ms. Murray. Sorry. Ms. Murray?
We didn't have you.
Yes. She, she was a colonel while she was sitting. At any rate, I said, we can't accept this person's recommendation. It's, there's obviously not enough room. And so she said, you're not bound by it. But I don't think we've ever otherwise gone against the consultant's recommendations.
Yeah, there, there was no way that would have had any kind of queuing there.
There was no escape lane.
There was no escape. I mean, so you have, you know, you're not that constrained because you do have, you have accomplished, your onsite is, is, is okay. It's just a small site. And I can, I can just immediately see. And then that becomes a huge safety issue for me. Even if it's just for a 30-minute period in the morning when the buses are all going through and the children are, are sitting on, next to their road trying to get, I, I just have a major issue. But I would like to do a site visit because I feel that everybody here should go and look at the site and just kind of get a feel for it.
Well, I'll send some, do you guys wanna try for a weekend I take it?
Sure.
A weekend site visit?
Maybe not when they're digging up.
Well, if you want to come on Saturday, I get some extra pick and shovel.
I was gonna say, you want us to work?
You guys all got steel-toed work boots?
Yeah, hard hands.
Actually, I do because I used to work offshore.
Yeah. You have some good boots, too.
Yeah. Not, not that I use them very often anymore, but my feet haven't grown.
It's also light until eight o'clock at night. So, I mean, it doesn't matter to me.
Is Sunday a better day?
Whatever's convenient for you guys when you're around.
Let me send out some dates and times and copy both of you. Thank you, Ann. Chris? Any comments?
Weekend should be fine for me. But I, I don't really have much more to add. I think once we see what DOT says and the, the traffic consultant or the traffic impact study, I'm, I'm fine with relying on that information.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
At this point, no comment.
Chairman?
Yes.
I was gonna say, I do, I'm looking through their draft letter. One of the comments from DOT was that the sidewalks need to be relocated into the municipal right-of-way or the DOT right-of-way. So one of the things we...
No, they don't.
On other projects, if it's on private property...
Public access easement.
They offer a public access easement to the town. So...
I here want to point out that DOT actually yelled at me personally in a meeting because the sidewalks, they said, we were putting sidewalks not in DOT right-of-way. They were referring specifically to the Saki Brewery, which had they been in there, it would be on the road itself. And I point out that we didn't listen on our side, actually.
And same with the walk visit. When you come down 9G, listen, I've been, Ms. Tad gave us numerous tickets. We shovel the sidewalks. The DOT on overtime wants to ride up and down with their plow and just swing the snow back. And we gotta keep shoveling it. All the sidewalks that are put on that property now were put on, I did it myself. They're not in the right-of-way. They're on private property. And I maintain it.
What, what I'm suggesting is that in your answer to that question about the sidewalks and the right-of-way, you say that you are, you will offer a public access easement over the private property to the town of Hyde Park so that they remain open. Because they're, the concern is that they want to make sure the public has the right to traverse the sidewalks.
This was done over at the Hyde Park assisted living facility?
Yeah.
We did not require this for, of stop and shop when they redid the plaza down there. But DOT said, well, there's no, no other sidewalks are, they're all in public right-of-way. And I said, no.
Associates golf carts, of course.
Same one. Yep. So...
They seem to be accept, I have another project in another community where they've accepted that as well. So that might...
So you don't have to move on. Public access easement?
A public access easement.
One more time. They don't have control of where sidewalks go. We do. No offense.
Well, if they're gonna hold up the permit, though, for it, then...
Permit, I, well, it angers me because half the time, half the time I love talking to DOT and saying, and who designed that intersection where you're coming off the arterial and getting back on?
Oh, the clover?
Yes. That was done by DOT, just pointing that out. At any rate, we wanna make sure that the sidewalk is located where it's gonna be the safest for people to actually walk.
Mm-hmm.
End of story. And you may have actually young people walking down there because people in eighth grade, in seventh grade these days drink coffee. I did whatever I said.
It's a sore subject with me because when we put that sidewalk in, my adjoining neighbor to the south...
Did not.
Has not have a sidewalk there. And the shrubs are so high. And I keep sending them certified letters and keep going, reaching the DOT because the shrubs are projecting out in the DOT right-of-way. And they keep referring me to their maintenance agreement that the property owner's supposed to maintain it and they don't have any control over it, which I think is, is ridiculous also. But nevertheless, we'll get through it.
Agreed. Anything else in there, in the comments?
That's it.
But yes, that is, that's a response to DOT. You can also tell them the town prefers having people be able to access places safely, not necessarily in DOT right-of-way. One of the reasons why Councilman Lombardi, because I said the event did come tonight, I didn't know if we would have this new part of the presentation, though, Mike, was that at the last meeting, we had some neighbors who were, if not irate, at least not very positive in their speaking.
They were concerned.
Yes. And I did not say it to the first lady who spoke, the one who's been here, I think, a couple of years, was complaining about sounds, et cetera, which we're going to, again, we will address this. But she was under the apparent misunderstanding that the fence is on her property. It's not. It's on Mr. Lombardi's. And when the, I believe she asked me how high fences could be, and I said six feet. That is set in code as six feet. It's also set in the zoning as being part of the bulk standards, even though it's not listed in the bulk standards in the back. So it would require variance. Mr. Lombardi indicated he would not be, he would be amenable to erecting an eight-foot high fence if that would help block the views from the neighbor, provide more screening. And so I wanted to make sure that people here tonight heard this because if this is going to be a go, they need to start an application to the Z E V A for the variance on the height of the fence. And I have a feeling that on this one, they will ask us for comment. So does everyone feel as though the eight foot is warranted in this case?
Is that what we would need to do? I'm also thinking of, is it, because is it a view thing or is it a sound thing? Because I'm thinking, I'm thinking at the Antiochian church, we did some kind of buffering.
They did a panel.
We did the sound panel.
We did a sound panel so that it bounced the sound away from the resident.
And then, no, well, we learned, no one's an expert, but we learned from talking to audio people, so, or audio people, let me phrase that, audio consultants, people who do noise impact analyses, that there's two kinds of panels you can add to a fence or an interior. One is an absorptive, so when you speak, it actually, and the other is, it bounces back so that it doesn't either way penetrate past that fence. Over, I don't think I've agreed with that vote. I think I might have voted no.
Yes.
Architectural, same thing.
Harry Winn, Harry Winnie was one.
We had one neighbor near St. James Antiochian who complained about this sound of the generator. I here point out that he had a generator himself right next to his beverage window. But my colleagues overruled me on that one because I don't think that we should always try to do something for just one property impact. It should be something bigger. But the rest of the board was amenable to having this. And so was the applicant at the time trying to move that forward. So we went that way. But first, is everyone okay with, would people be okay, generally speaking, with an eight-foot tall fence, those on the board, that's on the line?
Yes.
If it's intended to be for screening and for perhaps sound attenuation as well?
I mean, sure.
Okay. That's clear guidance.
Listen, my, my wife owned this property for 25 years. We had an ice cream place there where the grass area on the side was a full-blown playground.
I remember.
Played out there with lights out there. At that time, the person that owned that house, that the old rural pump house that this lady now owns, she objected. She said, hey, listen, there's gonna be noise. There's gonna be this. Make a long story short, we were going to work there, ended up being our manager for five years and loved the place. Sometimes things get blown out of proportion.
Well, it's a matter of what they've gotten used to. It's gotten quiet since the restaurant closed. So that's what they're used to.
Yeah, it has. But you gotta keep in mind, we got a motel right directly across the street that the people are walking up and down and making noise. You got the auto bodies, you got the repair shop right alongside. Every three, three sides of the floor are...
You don't have to convince me.
I believe I brought those issues up myself because it's also when you buy a parcel of residence next to a commercial lot, you need to expect that there'll be commercial uses and that there'll be changes over time because there's no business that stays static forever.
And if, and if I could clarify, I'm, I'm okay with the eight-foot fence. I'm just not sure it's needed.
Right.
You know what I, you know what I mean?
I, I get you, but I don't wanna wait till the last minute and then go through this whole process. It's gonna take me another two or three months.
Right. But that's, right.
Yeah. So that's why I was asking and trying to get your opinion on what direction to go. If you don't think it's needed, I won't go through that exercise.
I mean, from my understanding, the only person to bring that up as an issue was the neighbor.
That's correct.
I haven't heard it echoed.
And remember, the, the prior owner made that pathway through so they could walk from the house to the business right next door.
Yeah. The rural pump used to own the house she's in. And it was accessible from both sides.
But as I pointed out also, although she provided photos for us, photo, actual photos, because the back half of the building is going off, that visual element won't be there. The fence will basically just show the top of a, a little bit of a back of a building.
I don't even think it will show that. Most of her...
It may not.
Most of her screening that's on the other side of that fence is somewhat 12, 13 feet high.
I was gonna say, I can see a lot of greenery back there. Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
But again, we're not, it's, I also want to point out that because the back half of the building is going off, you will have the queuing for the cars. And there was discussion about the sound of...
True.
Idling cars.
Idling cars.
People on cell phones.
Honestly, I think the taller fence is the safest. He's ready to go. It's a good neighborly thing to do for that neighborhood.
Whatever you guys say.
Well, it'll also, it will help with reducing the amount of sound that goes across the way. Even if you don't put any kind of acoustical panels on it, it's gonna help because sound can be blocked.
Whatever you say, you just wanna move forward. Try to be good neighbors.
And, and we are gonna move the menu board further north.
Thank you. That was the other suggestion that Victoria made. So I thought you'd follow up on that. Great. Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? We had a full house last time on it.
They come out tonight.
And they had a, and they had a meeting outside after we were done.
Yes.
Well, that was an interesting meeting because when the first, actually, the very first lady who spoke said, is this gonna be on my land? And I'm like, no, illegally can't be on your land. It has to be on his. I realize that a lot of the people there
had never been to a planning board or really understood what we were doing.
You know, he did drop the DOT, the engineers' drawings that we received today to show on next door and then kinda walked out and kinda laid out everything to basically show because he was more concerned about his access point. And he fully, he fully understood it. And thanked me for bringing this stuff over and showing it to him. So...
Would you like to, oh, Ms. Henshaper, please come up and identify yourself with the...
I just have one quick question.
Microphone, microphone.
No, sorry. No. I, I just have one quick question. Is that, I'm, I'm Kate with Riverwood Signs as well. And is that the final look of what your sign's gonna look like?
Probably not.
Okay. Because I don't know if the site plan was going, you know, the sign was included in the site plan, but...
There are two ways to get your sign erected. One is through site plan, the other is through special, a different permit.
Right. So I didn't know, because I see it on there. And I just didn't know if that was the final version of it because it's kinda plain looking. Okay. All right. Just asking.
You're getting free consulting.
For right now, it's, for right now, it's a placeholder. That's what I think.
It's more for the size.
But it says something on it, right? Coffee shop.
Yeah. It's just the project's name, I guess.
That's all.
Thank you, Kate.
Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak about this application? Would you like for us to adjourn this to, Mike?
Well, when is your next meeting?
June 5th and after that, July 17th.
Aren't we waiting for DOT comments?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think we should have them.
Do you want, do you want us to adjourn the public hearing to July? If you, if we have them, you can do workshop on June 5th.
Is there any chance we can close the public hearing?
No. You know that.
You know I gotta ask.
No, I don't know that. That's a silly and inane question. It's not good for your reputation. There. If we close the public hearing, what can we not do? We can't accept any new information, Mike. So we have to approve the limited stuff you have now that hasn't been approved by DOT. Oh, gotcha. Sorry. I'll explain that one later on. But yes, if we close the public hearing, we can't take any new information. So we couldn't get your new...
What are you looking at me for?
We couldn't watch your new building, your new fence, your new fence or anything else. Now he's representing the other one. Then it would be his life, technically. At any rate.
Yeah, no, June 5th will be fine.
Okay. Make it a motion to adjourn this to June 5th.
Some over.
Well, we'll, we'll be down the door.
I'm just letting you know, it costs more for you to be doing a public hearing than it would be to a workshop, a little bit. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any major abstentions? Okay, June 5th. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We wanna see the next installment of the CIA Hotel Village Show.
Next item on the agenda is a workshop, Kelty Holdings, two lot minor subdivision. They've, you've all had a chance to see a new submittal pointing out which buildings are going to be gone. So we have a resolution prepared to classify the action and except for sketch under our code, minor subdivisions, actually, major, minor and major. We have to do what's called except for sketch. It has no environmental impact review. It's just in our code, but it means basically, it looks good enough to proceed. So we're doing that first. We'll also, as I said, classify the action. And in addition, there'll be a few sort of conditions made, but in the resolution, which we can give you a copy of tonight. But in addition, the biggest sort of, I think, condition in here is about assigning density. I wanna make sure you understand that.
Yep.
So you have a parent parcel, then you have so many units that you got. So you just decide how much you wanna assign to each parcel. In my personal opinion, you have one big parent parcel that you're gonna keep. The other smaller one is, I think, 2.54 acres. So if the soils were good enough, you could probably put another house on there. But you may wanna consider assigning most of the density to the bigger parcel.
Correct. I think it was, I think it was a swap by the surveyor. He told me...
Bruce, can you get in the mic? We can barely hear you in.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Yeah. I talked to my surveyor. He said he saw what happened, so he has to swap it around.
Thank you.
And I got, that's what I got from the Tad today about an email from.
Any comments from, who has escrow on this?
Everybody.
Everybody. Comments? Ms. Fransom?
Not this one.
Ms. Stero?
The only thing is, I, I sent out an email and I talked to Bruce yesterday about just going to the DPW, which is in here already, because there was two farm, farm gates, as long as the DOTs, or DOT, as long as, as long as the DPW is like, okay with those, fine. If they want one of them taken out, then it'll have to be shown on the map. And then also just that creating the large parcel, I'm sure, I'm sure that it's fine. But we typically, once we create a parcel, and there could be the potential for a house being built on that parcel in the future, we just wanna make sure that there's a spot along that frontage that a residential driveway could be located in the future. I believe there is, but we normally wanna get something writing from, whether it be, you know, an email is fine from the DPW. So, and Bruce, Bruce...
Yeah, I was gonna reach out to Bill from the DPW to see.
Yeah, he's a good guy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I can meet him out there if I have to or whatever. Then...
Yeah.
I guess just getting something back and an email from him is sufficient for, from your end?
Uh, I mean, we, yeah, I mean...
It doesn't have to be memorialized on formal paper, but, because we often get things like...
An email's fine. As long as it has, like, in his signature block and it's from an official email address.
Okay.
An email from Bill...
Is good.
That's got all, that's got all the stuff on it.
Okay.
Official titles and stuff.
Thank you, Pete. Anything else?
No.
Ms. Moss?
No.
Ms. Polino?
I think you just discussed the density issue.
Mm-hmm.
And there are some other things about updating the plans for the zoning table corrections, et cetera.
Yeah, like from Tad's email.
Yep.
Yes.
So we put it in the reservation, but that's it.
Okay. That sounds great.
And just so you understand, because you don't have a lot of consultants, the next step would be to go to, once this is done and you meet your conditions here, then you go to final subdivision. And then that's it. You file the plat.
There's an application.
There's an application.
Yeah. I have it here.
And then we'll set a public hearing.
So I would submit the final, minor subdivision, final plat application.
And we set a public hearing.
Make all these corrections, submit this, and then wait to hear what you have to say.
And we have to, we have to circulate it as well.
Yeah. So we're doing that now. And then we'll set a hearing.
So this is going to DCDPW, that's it, right? Because it's a subdivision, okay. Any questions, Mr. Kelder House?
Nope, I'm good.
Good. Any comments from the board? Okay, then this is Ms. Dexter's.
Resolution to classify the action and except for sketch, Kelty Holdings LLC, resolution number 2024-06. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby classifies the project as an unlisted action under seeker and declares its intent to conduct a coordinated review. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby directs its secretary to circulate notice of its intent to serve as lead agency to all involved and interested agencies. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby classifies the project as a minor subdivision pursuant to section 96-4 of the subdivision law. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby accepts the sketch plan in accordance with section 96-12C of the subdivision law and requests the following information be added to the final plat. A, the zoning information table must assign density between lot one and lot two and include existing building setbacks. B, the existing access gates to lot two must be depicted on the final plat. C, the plat shall include a revision date. D, a driveway location for lot one that meets all requirements of the Dutchess County Department of Public Works. Second.
Any further discussion? I have a quick question. Why did we use letters on our...
I know, that was, that was a new one.
Is that Cassie?
Just curious.
I think, yeah.
I had the same question.
Because when I saw it, I was like, wait, we always have numbers on here.
I think, yeah.
It had a, the resolutions were drafted in my office while I was away, at least the base resolution, so I didn't catch the number.
Oh, it was just, as I said, curiosity.
So Cassie prefers letters.
Apparently.
Anybody else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any major extensions? Motion carries. So these, all of these don't have to be done until they're final plats. You submit for final.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your patience. Grounded.
Speaking of patience. It's next one, right? You're on camera.
The next agenda. Grounded dispensary, finally. You could have gone and taken a vacation in South Africa and come back.
Good.
I thought this meeting would be done by 7:30. At any rate, welcome back.
Thank you.
A reminder that the town still has a moratorium on these applications. Remember, this application was submitted prior to the, that action being taken and the applicants are aware they're proceeding at their own risk. And as I understand it, I have now seen the revised cannabis law. It's a lot shorter and simpler.
Yeah.
My preliminary comments were, make it even shorter and more simple.
Right.
But at least it provides better guidance now for you guys. I don't know if you saw the first one, but I think this one, the newer version is a lot clearer about
Yeah, yeah.
what role we have versus the town board, et cetera.
Right, right. I mean, duplicating a license didn't make sense.
It's illegal.
Right.
The state law specifically prescribes a town from giving a special license because the state's already given that.
Correct.
We also can't override the distances from certain structures, buildings, uses, et cetera, because the state has established all that.
Correct.
When I finally read the law and its guidance, because the guidance came out a little bit later, it seems clear that it's saying towns cannot treat these like pariah businesses. It's like any other business.
Right.
So, because that's the way it's intended to.
We're in favor of that.
Anyway, enough of all that, Markey. Let me turn it over to you guys.
Oh, okay.
You've made some changes.
So we did make some changes.
Can you speak into the microphone? You'll have to use the mouse to open it.
So we did make some changes on your recommendations with, I guess, some landscaping and curbing that we added to the parking lot in the back. We did get our DOT work permit. So that was established. And we also had Department of Health come up with, with our engineer, a plan for the septic revision. And it should be signed off soon, and the water retention on the property. So those, those kind of things in the site plan, I think, are the major things.
You changed the architecture?
We did. We did after five iterations. I think we, we came up with something that hopefully the town likes and we should have it on the board there. Maintaining the roof, but adding canopies to the front so that they cover the doorway, the windowways, gives a little covered path also in the front of the building. And the colors are, they're pretty close, right? So how do you like it? How do I like it?
I'll call on each person later on, don't worry.
I hope everybody's saying yes. And also, we'll stick with site plan.
First question is, are those real windows?
They are real windows, yes.
You can't, you're not allowed by state law to see any product, so what would you look at?
Well, the windows are, from the inside, don't show any product, any cannabis, anything. So in, on the two right windows, there's a curved wall in the interior that blocks any view to the space. And as well as the two on the left, they face into office space. So they're not visible to the selling floor. We did alternatively propose the front door as being two separate doors. They're both going to swing out from the middle so that the right, and it'll be clearly indicated, the right will be an entry only and the left will only be an exit. Because of the way that it's constructed on the inside, in that we have to not allow people to come back into this selling space. And once they leave the selling space, they're, they're walking out the door or they come back in through the regular security. So there'll be a space of about a foot between those two doors, roughly. Maybe a little less, but enough so that it doesn't jam up the inside, people coming out of the store and people going in. You see the sign we're going to propose to erect on the building and as well as on the road. There was an issue that the sign company brought up that we may be able to get approval if it's set back a little further than the, than the right of way or in the area that's, you know, acceptable. Okay, well, he did it within the code, the letter size within the code. We did change the R, so it brings it a little bit... And that's all going to be lit from the back?
No, underneath.
Underneath. Oh, that's right.
It's a light bar.
Yeah, I got a bar and it shines down. Right, correct. What else? I think that's, we had some shrub issues, but I think we addressed what would be appropriate.
Yes, he had some things that are not allowed.
Yeah, right.
That's the brown portion on the mock-up. That's what the paneling will be.
Black is black.
And the black is just a dark black board and bad siding.
And this is the one that's running horizontal on the side?
Correct. Correct.
Yes, with the angle.
And the other portion of it, the one that runs vertical? Cynthia and I looked that up, and I'd forgotten what it was.
I never received this, I didn't receive a spec sheet for it, but we looked it up and it looked like a cementous board, maybe?
Yeah, it's a fiber board simulate wood, but it's, you know, weather resistant and all that. Non-malleable. I'm not sure.
No, it's not called hardy board. It's a cementous board, but we didn't recognize the brand, that's why.
Yeah.
The vertical part.
It's noted on the elevation or the rendering, I think.
That's really it on the site.
So, sorry, can you just explain that elevation? That's from Route 9 or that's in the rear?
Yes, that's on Route 9, facing Route 9.
So people still have, they're going to park in the rear and then walk to the front?
Walk around the front. On either side, you can do that on the building.
Right.
Right. We did design the septic and the water retention. So in the back of the building, which is, it shows a tank and two laterals and then two, two laterals, what they call overflow, I guess, is, is that what they call it? And, and so it's designed in the back of the building. The distance to the wells should all be correct, neighboring wells as well as our own well. And I think there are only comments from Board of Health where there's the lengths of the laterals. It just had to be another two feet or four feet.
No, they also commented about the bathroom.
About the bathroom?
Yes.
Oh, okay. We removed the public bathroom.
I'm getting that, I'm going to make sure that's into the record, so.
Yeah.
This location will not have a bathroom available to the public.
Correct. Emergency use in the back, they said, is possible if, if anybody, emergency needs to use the bathroom. And they can be escorted to the bathroom.
Sorry. I hate to see how you have to prove that it's an emergency.
Yeah.
It might be a little late by the time...
Basically, we're not letting anybody use the bathrooms.
No restroom, but there will be two for the employees.
No, I know that. In other words, the existing restrooms will stay, or not the existing, but we'll still have restrooms for employees.
Correct.
Because that was, and I want to point out, Mr. Teed at Department of Health said it'd be better if they don't have public bathrooms.
Yeah.
Because of your limitations on you.
Water supply.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So that's why we, yeah, that's why we took it away.
Okay. Ms. Fransom, any comments?
No. No, we just got it, so I'll take a look at it. Now that also we got closer to a local law.
The law, right.
To see if there's anything that stands out.
The local law will likely require a special use permit.
Yeah, we're aware of that.
So the term is, there's special permit, cannabis establishment permit, special use permit, and another term. So that's where my comments was, make it consistent throughout what it's going to be.
Exactly.
So, and the planning board will be doing seeker. Not the town board, but the town board will issue, as I understand it, the special use permit. So we'd have to do seeker on a print permit that we don't...
We'd have to refer to the town board.
Yes, I know.
And they would do that simultaneously with adoption of the law?
No.
Not necessarily?
No. There has to be a form created for a cannabis retail permit, I believe. So, and they, the law won't take, remember, the law doesn't take into effect until it's adopted
Right.
and entered in Department of State as an actual law.
We're aware of that.
In terms of, and this is just a general question with the law itself, it looks like it's going to be its own section and within the section of the zoning, it will have its own definitions because there's overlap, a little overlap between some of the main definitions of the zoning and the definitions in that section. So for instance, there's retail sales.
I didn't even make comments on that yet because this was, I was just asked to give high line comments
Okay.
after my first sets of comments. So they were, my comments were reduced greatly, which is good, but there's still some clarification, I think.
Okay.
And so I thought on these kinds of things, I'd wait till we have to write them back formally as a board.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Pete?
Well, we don't have anything yet. There was, you know, like, as, as Brian said, the plans were just handed in and I don't anticipate anything major on our end. We'll take a look at, you know, the drainage that Frank...
That's basically a...
Frank said, mm, I think there's a new entrance onto, what's, you know, the side road.
River Point, River Point.
Right. The back will be entry and exit. Yeah, so we'll just go, we'll just go over that with Howie, but I don't foresee anything, you know.
You're using the existing entry and exit, aren't you, on River Point?
We just closed off the front.
Yeah, they closed off the front site where you could park in the front. That's gone, but the rear still has the same location.
That's Department of Transportation.
Ms. Moss, comments? Ms. Polidoro, comments?
Well, tonight we have a resolution to send back to county planning because it was incomplete last time. But really, it can't move forward too far until we really know what the final law is going to be and look like and we understand that process.
Particularly because there's a special use permit, they're going to have to comply for that as well.
So the moratorium expires in June?
Six months, right?
I don't remember the date it was adopted. It was adopted for only a six-month time period. I mean, the town board does have the option of extending it.
Right.
So, because I'm not sure, if it's two months from now, we should be, we should be able to have it reasonably finished before then. That's what I'm guessing, because as I said, the second iteration was an improvement. It's more simple. And it's easier to follow logically. They just, there's some nomenclature issues. Like I said, be consistent with what you're going to call the permit they're going to get or that these businesses would receive. So, no other comments?
No.
Ms. Moss, anything?
No.
Mr. Waters, we're going to start with you again. Comments?
Mine are always, you know, deal mostly with the architectural.
Right.
And I'm not a big fan of flat roofs.
Can you get your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm not a big fan of flat roofs, especially at the gateway, you know, it's kind of like a gateway into the town. So I under, you know, I understand, you know, the, what, what is proposed. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, you know, we, we try to make other people comply to put pitched roofs on things and then this, this particular case, it's a, you know, it's a flat roof on the structure. And that's, that's where I'm at with it.
Anything else on the architecture while we're at it?
No, I mean, I just, I, you know, again, I just doodled in the car on the way over here. But, you know, it's just, yeah, it's just to show, you know, what can be, but, you know, it's, it's, and it wouldn't be, if you didn't do the, if you did a pitched roof on it, it could be part of the structure. It doesn't have to be the whole structure and it could be trussed. And I understand, you know, you don't want anything where there's access up onto the roof technically. I guess for security reasons, I'm sure that's a...
That is a concern.
Probably something that you, you know, you'd have to follow. But like I said, my big thing is to, you know, I was looking at the, the structure that, is it Tim?
Tim.
Yeah, that, that did it, yeah. I was looking at his, you know, where he was putting structure and stuff. And there is, it's like a 20-foot into the building and there's a, you know, that's basically where a ridge could go. So it wouldn't have to follow the whole structure. So cut down on costs on doing it. That's...
Well, we just, we spent about probably 70,000 to put a new roof. The structure that, you know, the membrane and all that stuff, not the structure, but
Yeah.
we would cover that up. We would cover a lot of it up.
Yeah. That, that's, that's, you know, I wish you hadn't done that.
Okay, well, I mean, you can modify things, right?
Yeah. It would be, it would be a, you know, an overbuild on, on to what's there because it's, the structure is there.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm sure it's there.
For sure.
But, but, you know, that's my, that's my opinion of it.
Right.
It's, we, you know, like, even the bank, that was a square box. The Hudson Valley Credit Union. And we had to do things to it to make it not look like that. And now, now we're going back to going to a square, you know, square building. So...
Well, we, what we had them do is what's in the code, which is you have to disguise flat roofs with the additions of cornices, Ls, gable in walls, whatever.
Right, right.
And I'll just go ahead and weigh in and say, the last version that I saw of this architecture had something in the front, pediments or something to break up that flat mass. Because I don't like the architecture. I'm sorry to tell you that, but I really don't.
Right.
The, the state law, in reading it, these buildings are never going to be gorgeous because of the limitations of what they kind of hide everything. It's, more or less say, make it a big box, that's it.
Yeah.
But boxes can have ornamentation on the outside, and I thought the last version was better myself, but I'm interrupting.
No, but, you know, I, and, and the last, the last one, the issue I had with it was, it was more like that western front, I think. It didn't, it didn't protrude far enough into the structure.
Yeah.
So I was taking it, you know, the roof system would go from the, the front of the building to basically where your, your columns are
Yeah.
in the interior.
Support.
You know.
Right.
And so, so the back half would be still flat and parapitted.
Right.
So you'd hide equipment up there. Because, you know, just, here's, here's an example. When you do the pitched roofs, you, and you, and if you put air conditioning units and stuff up, you end up what happened with Ready Coffee, where everything is exposed and looks terrible. It's, looks like a big wedge cut into a roof.
Yeah.
So, so I understand the reason behind the parapets and stuff to conceal it. But like I said, I'm more in, in, in that main, especially that we're having all this, this construction being done by, you know, Bellfield, the CIA, apparently. Everything is, is, you know, supposed to look nice, but now we're, we're going back to the way it was.
Well, that's why we figured the canopies were the focal point here. And so that was where the eye gets attracted to and, you know, the box part of it is what's existing. And really was the canopy that we thought would make the difference.
Not, yeah, and you wouldn't, like, in this case, you wouldn't need the canopies, but that's a small part of, you know, with the roof system. But like I said, I, you know, I, I could give you a copy of what I did.
All right, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
And maybe there's a happy medium or you like it or you don't. It's not the scale, it's just a real quick sketch.
Okay.
But that was that. I wish you hadn't done the...
Well, we had to, we had to do that.
You had to do it anyway?
Yeah, yeah. It was compromised in some areas, so, leaking, so we had to place it. We have to go over a portion of it. Good, certainly.
So, okay, so, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look.
Yeah. Stephanie?
Well, I'm going to pick up where we left off, which, you know, and I feel bad, you said, do you like it? I don't like, you clearly are happy with it, but I have to agree with what you've heard so far. It's not just a flat roof. I mean, I think it's edgy and maybe that's, you were looking for something edgy related to the product.
Right.
I get that, but it's quite, well, no, I mean, it's...
I get it.
But it's a concept. But it's, it's awfully dark and severe for the entrance into our town. And just Hyde Park architecture, you know, we, we use stone and we use wood and, well, you have the wood. But I'm just concerned that it's just a little too severe and dark as well as flat. Also, I saw on the, I saw the construction safety plan, the fencing.
Yes.
Do you plan to have fencing around the whole site when you're finished? Do you plan to have fencing around the whole site when you're finished?
While, while we're actually working.
When it's completed, for security.
Oh, no, no, just in the back.
Okay.
Area on the concrete pad. That'll be the entrance for employees in the back.
Okay.
And for product delivery.
Okay, great.
Gated and secured back there, actually.
That's all I'm gonna comment on tonight.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I like the materials, I like that, that wood. Um, but I'm thinking, you know, how do, the classic flat roof, what do we, what do we do with the flat roofs? You don't, can't make them put a gauze on this, right? Um, but I'm thinking of the Board of Elections.
Right.
That we, um, basically, we had them, it's still a flat roof, right, but we had them, they did, it was kind of block, blocky, industrial looking.
Right.
They dropped, yeah, so it, it was a little bit of articulation, but if you look at that and they mixed materials.
Yeah. Well, that's kinda the concept we, we were going with.
There's a difference.
Yeah.
The Board of Elections building is so big, a petrify would look moronic on it because it would be way too hot.
True.
The code actually says, again, read code, says that traditional architecture, which is what Hyde Park is supposed to be going through based on our comprehensive plan, et cetera, is kinda the style that the town's looking for.
Right.
And this building is very small, so it could have a petrify, that's sort of the difference.
Okay.
What about a suggestion of like a turret on the corner, like you proposed?
Is that where it pops, something pops up?
Yeah, something pops up on the corner of, one corner of the, of the building.
So, there's another one of, one, another one of our flat roofs on a relatively small building was the, um, it's right next to the Hyde Park Highway Department, uh, where they had actually put up on the, on the corners. They put turrets on the.
Rockledge Plaza.
Oh, yes.
So, right next to there where they just, and it just.
Okay. Just a kinda little definition.
Because I must say, that first round where you had, where it looked like the Old West.
Yeah.
I can't handle that.
No, we couldn't do that yet.
I'd actually rather prefer to have a, a edgy box looking thing than that weird. Um, but I'm just thinking what we've done around town that's worked and worked well.
Okay, I'm gonna look at Rockledge.
Uh, and yes, the Board of Elections is large, but maybe there's something there that could, could work. The mix, the mix of the materials was nice.
Yeah.
You know.
There's some stone in the front.
There was some stone, there was some, you know, but that place right just north of, um.
I'll take a look at Rockledge.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that, I know that plaza. Okay.
By the way, none of us love saying we didn't like your architecture.
Right, right, I know that. Kind.
But you didn't draw it.
Right, right. But yeah, we need to, we need to try to always be cognizant of the code.
Okay.
But I think that's all. And hopefully, maybe Rob came up with something cool.
It's right there next to you.
Yeah, we're gonna.
You can also look at red cap cleaners, it's got a flat roof, but they did the same, they did something similar, they didn't, you know, edging around it.
Yeah.
And again, broke up the roof line, 'cause I think that's what bugged me, it was just the straight roof line looking so straight.
Yeah, okay.
Chris, comments?
So, I always try to look at, you know, new projects in the town, like very, you know, what do we have, what are we getting? And what we have.
Is bad.
Is bad.
True.
What you're gonna do is a lot better.
Yeah.
Um, but with that being said, I do think we can do some articulation with that flat roof line and I think it would be really beneficial to go to the Board of Elections building, 'cause that's gonna, I think, lend you the simplest, um.
Design.
Idea.
Right.
To, to achieve breaking that up with adding some elements to it and maybe less of a focus on the canopies and more, uh, materiality in breaking up that, that roof line.
Gotcha.
And then adding some, you know, maybe one, uh, canopy or awning to bring like a different color or, or a nice contrasting color to the building that might really, uh, lend itself to being a nicer gateway building.
Okay, kinda blends in black, yeah.
Yeah.
I got you.
You know, something to kinda make, not, not necessarily make it stand out and say, "Hey, I'm here," but just to break up.
A contrast with the black.
The facade of the building.
Gotcha, okay.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
John? My wheels are turning.
Where that building is located, all, all the buildings are a flat roof.
They are.
Yep.
And I, one was Windsor Building Supply, now it's, uh, something else.
Yeah.
Then there's that one there where the pest control is in and now you got this. I mean, the chimney plaz.
And Planet Fitness.
I don't.
Planet Fitness.
Planet Fitness is flat, used to be a pool hall years ago.
Davis Furniture.
Davis Furniture.
Yeah, yeah, I remember.
I mean, they're kind of all the same genre of buildings. I, I don't think having a flat roof in that area is gonna be terrible.
Right.
Um.
I agree.
You can do things that are, like they're saying.
Just to kinda define it a little bit.
Dress it up. I wouldn't make it too dark, but I wouldn't make it too bright, 'cause I don't think that fits your business.
Right, right.
I like the wood.
Yep.
The horizontal wood. I'm not crazy about the battens, I'm not sure, 'cause I can't really.
It's a, it's not really depicted of what it's really gonna be.
Yeah.
We'll have the samples and a little panel of what it, what it's gonna look like in that, in that angle, kinda to, to show you.
It is a commercial center.
Yeah.
Long there. I mean, so, um, you know, I, I, I'd hate to see a cover-up, I know what it costs to put a flat roof on.
Yeah.
And I know, I know what it would be like and what it would cost to, to put a whole bunch of peaks up there.
Yeah, it's not cheap.
Not cheap. So, I mean, I'd go back to the drawing board and see if I could come, come up with something a little bit more creative.
Okay. Yep.
That's just fine.
I'm thinking, and I'll take a look at Rockledge, that might be a good example, and, and the county building.
And the Board of Elections, right.
Yeah, for sure.
And I just had a, I just had a thought, um, it's a residence and I think it was a bed and breakfast off of Market Street, uh, I don't think it's a bed and breakfast anymore.
The yellow house.
Um, no, it's a, it's a, just a regular house, uh, but what they did around the front entrance was they put a wood box around it and it's just a regular house, but it, I, I wanna send a picture, I'm gonna send a picture.
Okay.
Uh, it's a light wood, the rest of the house is darker and it's really cool because it, it details the entrance, it comes out, so it's actually the awning and.
The walls around it.
But I'm just kinda thinking that.
Did you read by mail?
Yeah.
No, no, it's a Market Street.
The other way.
Uh, East Market.
Howard Boulevard?
Howard Boulevard.
I know where that is.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
On the corner there?
Uh, you go in a little bit.
Valeries, yes.
Go in Howard.
And it has a very interesting.
Oh, look.
But it's, it's very plain.
Sounds interesting.
Um, but it is that in connection with another element.
Yeah.
That, that might break it.
Okay.
Uh, could also accomplish what you need, where you need to keep them separate.
Right.
But I'll send a picture.
Okay, yeah.
'Cause I just saw it on something and went, "Well, that's so cool."
All the way down.
Howard?
Howard.
I know Howard.
It's the last one on the right.
Okay. That's a cul-de-sac, isn't it, dead end?
It's a cul, and the wall's started, it doesn't dead end, there's a bridge that crosses over.
Oh, okay, is that what it is?
It's private property, yeah.
That's, I can't remember what you're talking about right now, but that was, all those building, all those residences were mostly built in the 60s and 70s, so they're kind of boxy.
Right.
And they wanted, they wanted to change it up a little bit.
And I just saw it in the past week or so and I went, "I forgot how cool that was." You know, I mean, just weird little element to throw on something.
We'll give it all that thought to come up with something.
Yeah, all the little pieces.
For sure, for sure. I just have one other comment, though.
Hmm?
Uh, 'cause our main urgency is really to start to do some renovations inside and that would have to come from authorization from TAD ultimately, so, I don't know, we're kind of, you know, we're gonna have everything as far as plans submitted to Don and the Building Department, it's just a matter of, at our own risk, wanna be able to go forward from the, from the Planning Board, TAD, to go forward, at least the renovations on the interior.
TAD's not hearing you, that's, this is not really a Planning Board thing, this is a TAD thing.
Yeah, okay, so, but that authorization has to come from her in order for us to move forward, is that the right understanding?
We're not gonna, we're, we're, we're a moratorium, right? We're not authorized to move.
Yeah, when, right.
Well, I say, TAD can't, I don't think authorize because of the moratorium. We can take action.
Not even, not even interior renovations not to impact the site?
I think, I think the moratorium was all encompassing.
Yeah.
I have to go back and look at it, that's what I think.
Hmm.
I understand what you're, what you're hating by carving.
Yeah.
This is already a six-month delay.
I know.
Um, and I believe the first cannabis dispensary was an actual state license of Wyndham, Poughkeepsie.
Yes, they have.
Black Market?
Eighty-nine Main Street, yeah.
Yes.
Across from the Derby.
Not, not at the level we wanna do, but, you know, certainly a competition.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm not sure you're gonna fully be competing with it.
Probably not.
So, architecture, I'm gonna go ahead and just be the mean heavy tonight. Um, Mr. Lynch's father was an architect and the buildings he created are the worst in Hyde Park.
Okay.
Michael, why don't you just tell like.
I did.
Say it.
That's Mike's term for the planning board of his own.
Yes, yes, he was.
He designed this.
He approved them, right?
Wait, who designed this building? Who designed this building? This lovely, this monstrous ex presence? Mr. Lynch Senior, sorry.
Did he? Okay, I wasn't aware.
And Richard Chelly, the 60s modern church, we have, anything like Hyde Parker traditional architecture?
Yes, not at all.
No offense, I would've said that to Mr. Lynch Senior had I met him.
Uh-huh.
He was already in Florida, I think, by the time we bought here 30 years ago, so. But this looks like one of his buildings to me and that's why I'm really horrified.
Okay.
It's just a, it's a box that has very little ornamentation except for the canopies and the canopies don't look traditional to me in architectural style.
Okay.
Now, to sort of counter what Mr. Gertio said, there's a Stewart's right across the way and it does not have a flat roof.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't. There are other buildings around that they don't have flat roofs as well, there are three in a row, but again, if this weren't, if it's said in the code, flat roofs are fine, then I'd be saying, "You're right ahead."
Yeah.
But I personally, and with my colleagues up here, we've worked really hard to set a sort of better architectural style than what there used to be in the 60s and 70s when Elder Mr. Lynch was operating.
Okay.
Take a look at Dunkin' Donuts, you know, the Dunkin' Donuts we have on Route 9, there's another version of that that's down in Fishkill or Beeville, I get that area confused, on 9D. And literally, when they were, when it was being proposed, the, the Planning Board down there said, "We want the Hyde Park version," and they gave it to them.
Right, right.
Different owners. So, I'd like to see a little bit more referencing of something traditional and if Mr. Lynch wants to contact me and beat me up, he can. I haven't seen him in a while, but I believe he lives in Red Hook still.
Successfully, of course.
Yep, used to live here, and I'm happy to talk to him directly because I don't wanna be insulting, but.
Wouldn't like it.
That just looks kind of like it could be in Anywhere's Village, USA. And our code is supposed to be that we're trying to create a sort of a sense of place, I believe is the term, um, in the code used so that people, when they get here, go, "Oh, I'm in Hyde Park," because for too many years, people didn't realize they were in Hyde Park, they just drove right through.
Gotcha, okay.
So, for me, that's why I'm being kinda harsh tonight, like, I'd rather see shutters than canopies, something, just anything to make it look a little bit more traditional. Rob's look is definitely far more traditional in the style, it has a canopy that extrudes out over, obviously, which might make it nicer if you have crowds waiting, like they have in Massachusetts stores if it's raining.
Right, right.
Um, because people there just wait in their cars, not that I would know.
Right.
But the other, the other two, the other two gable in walls, I think, also give it a more traditional look. But again, I understand that there's costs involved, et cetera, but I suggest you just go back and talk to your architect because there, there are ways to do this that are less expensive.
Yeah, that, that, that is applied and padded out, so it's, it's like no more than like six inches.
When I saw the profile, I can see what it is.
It's very miniscule. And then the rest, the top is trusses and I, I think I even did a calculation, I, if I'm not mistaken, that's, is it 30, is it 70 feet long?
Uh, yeah. Sixty?
Sixty or something, so.
I think it's 70, yeah.